Start by opening a closed session meeting and I'll ask the clerk to please read the title.
Conference with Labor Negotiator Gina Rowland and Gregory Ramirez, Sutter County Professional Firefighters Association pursuant to Government Code Section 549-57.6.
Okay, well that will open the meeting and ask anyone who's not supposed to be present make sure they leave the room and... Oh, we're going to the Sutter Room, okay, didn't know that. Why can't we do it in here?
...
Hey to our three o'clock regular session meeting at three, a little later today too. During this meeting, we're also going to have an in-home supportive services.
Hey to our three o'clock.
Meeting as well. I'm going to read a statement.
To during this meeting, we're also going to have an in-home supportive.
Due to the governor's temporary partial exemption to the Brown Act, Sutter County Board of Supervisors meetings will be open to the public, but subject to the social distancing requirements which limit the number of people that may enter to 25% of room capacity. Those that wish to attend the board of board meeting will be required to wear a face covering as required by the local public health officer order. Okay, and I'll also read to you the procedure for public comment today. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board during the board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card noting the number of agenda item about which you wish to speak and present it to the board clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one agenda item, please fill out a separate card for each item. If you wish to speak under public comment, please note that the speaker card, note that on the speaker card. When the matter is announced, please approach the speaker's rostrum, which is located in the back there, and wait to be recognized by the chairman. Testimony should always begin with the speaker giving his or her own name. And tonight, we'd ask, we have a large stack of speaker cards, so we're going to stick to the three-minute rule. I know some of you like to go beyond, and but we're going to stick to the strictly tonight to the three-minute rule. Okay, so I just want you to be aware. All right, we'll start, if I can start with a roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Can I please ask you to report out from closed session before I call roll?
Oh, yes, sir. We just came back from closed session and we have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McKelley?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Yes.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Here.
Supervisor Conant?
Yes.
Okay, if we can ask everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for invocation. And if I could ask CAO Steve Smith, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation, and today's invocation will be Pastor Javier Caballero from Grace Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for the privilege we have of gathering together today as citizens of this town, of this county, of this nation. We thank you for the liberties that you've granted to us. And I pray that today, as we gather together, that you would help us to put aside all self-interest and work toward the common good, that you would help us to look to you for what is righteous and good, and to speak that which is true and noble and just. Father, we thank you for the grace that you've given us and all that you've done through your son, Jesus Christ, and that we have not only the hope of eternal glory through faith in him, but also the knowledge of what is right and true. And so now today, I pray that as we gather together, you would help us to focus on these things, and that many hearts would be turned to you today by the way in which we conduct ourselves, by the way which we love each other, and do what is best for our beloved city and county. Father, we thank you so much for your precious promises and praise you for the many benefits that we derive from you. And we do all of this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Caballero. If I could ask everybody to please remain standing. We're going to honor just a few moments of silence for the victims of the mass shootings over the last week. Eighteen peoples, you know, our fellow brothers and sisters in the country lost their lives. And so if we could just honor them with a short brief moment of silence. Okay, thank you. May you be seated. We're going to start with a special presentation today. That's going to be accepted by Nicole Rittner, so I think I'll come up front, Nicole. Oh, she's online, okay. You're online, right? Is she there? Is she there? Heather Walker? Okay, Heather, we just want to confirm you're online with us. Can you say hello?
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, Heather, we have a special resolution that we're presenting to you today for deputy probation officer three. Whereas Heather Walker retires from the probation department on March 25th, 2021, with over 25 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Sutter County. And whereas Heather Walker was selected to intern with the Sutter County Probation Department in 1993, while attending California State University Sacramento. And whereas Heather Walker became employed with Sutter County Probation Department in July 1993 as a clerk typist. And whereas Heather Walker was hired by Sutter County Probation Department as an office assistant in January 1996, and then promoted to executive secretary in February 1999. And whereas Heather Walker is hired to Sutter County Probation Department as a deputy probation officer one in January 2002, and then probated, promoted to deputy probation officer two in January 2003, and promoted to deputy probation officer three in February 2007. Little tongue twister there, but got it. Okay. Whereas Heather Walker held many assignments as a deputy probation officer, including juvenile court investigator, juvenile supervision officer, school resource probation officer for Yuba City High School, juvenile placement officer, adult court investigator, pre-trial services officer, adult supervision officer. And Heather has represented the probation department as a court officer and facilitator for barter's treatment program. Wow, that's pretty impressive there, Heather. And now therefore be it resolved that Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulation and sincere appreciation to Heather Walker upon her occasion of her retirement. So I would present this to you. Did you want to say a few words first?
I just wanted to say congratulations, Heather. Twenty-five years of amazing work. I think you're the only one in the history of Sutter who has done pretty much every single position that there is in the department, from intern to clerk to executive secretary to probation officer. And we are going to miss you very much, and we just wish you well.
Okay, Heather, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person to receive my gold resolution. Sutter County probation has been my second home and my second family for the past 25 years. I am grateful and proud of my job as a probation officer, and it has been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Sutter County. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you for your service, Heather. Twenty-five years, absolutely amazing, and I hope you have an amazing retirement. Thank you so much.
Just wanted to do the comments. Thank you for your continued support of Sutter County. Thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Heather. I think it's great the job you guys do to promote people making their lives a better place in the future after, you know, maybe they made a mistake in life and moving on. So I appreciate your support for the public in Sutter County. Thank you.
Yeah, just want to say congratulations and thank you so much. I think we all realize, of course, what a difficult job it is. So thank you so much for your service. Really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, sir. I got to know Heather when I was working at the probation department for several months back in thirteen or fourteen or fifteen. Time flies. But it was always a bright spot, stopping by her office and talking to her, and I, she really, you know, was a hard worker and deserves, deserves to have a great time in retirement. So thank you for all your hard work, Heather.
Thank you so much. Thank you all very much.
Okay, catch my breath to walk around the room. Okay, next part of the meeting is public comment. So I'll read, as I read off your name, you can go up to the rostrum there. And again, we're going to limit to three minutes, so when you hear the beeping go off, it's going to be three times, right, Madam Clerk? That's your warning, and then pretty much ends right at then, okay? So we'll start with, let's see, Stack Crew since I walked up there. What happened? All right. Okay, first is Jason Khan.
Thank you, Jason Khan, Yuba City. Thank you, Councilman, for letting me speak. Just want to speak real quick. I guess we pick and choose when we put tape up for these meetings. Last week, it was for the city, it was open. Today, it's closed. I mean, I don't, I don't understand. And then, are we listening to us speak every week? Every week you guys say you're listening to us. And then we get different agendas. It's like you guys don't pay attention. Getting a little irritating. We, we come in, week after week, voice our opinions, and we get different agenda items, like nothing ever happens, nothing's ever listened to. So just a little concerned about what we're doing here, what you guys are out there. You know, I spoke last week to the city when you guys were out. Each one of you, when you were out, want to get elected, you were out there every day campaigning, day and night, hitting the streets hard. And now you're elected, so now we want you to stand up for what you were elected for. Some of you we voted for, some of you we didn't. But it's your, it's your job now to stand up for us, and we need that. We're a county. We live in the state, but we're not a state. We're separated from the state. And it's our county is separated, and we can choose how we live. We can live without masks. Last week, city didn't even have a mask in sight, and yet you guys choose to bring some here. Kind of sad. So you guys make a choice. Stand up. Our sheriff stand up for us, they'll stand up for you. Be brave, be constitutional. That's what we are. We're, we're a state, we're a country that's constitutional, built on this constitution. I asked you guys, you guys took an oath, hopefully, to live by the constitution. So let's, let's do that. Stand up for us. Stand up for what we are, we the people, because we are the people. And we have a right. We elected you to stand up for us. You're speaking for us. So please do, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Trying to get these things in order here, because some of them are required to... Okay, Bob Coe.
I was here the last board meeting a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
I'd like to thank you guys for letting me come back to talk, but I say, the first thing I like to talk about, we want God to bless America. How can God bless America when it's turning its back on what it is? Everybody tells us, God bless America. How can we, God bless America when we're turning our back, letting abortions go on, then our veterans go without homes and stuff like that? Everybody wants the freedom. There's no such thing as freedom. The only freedom we got is when Christ died on the cross for us. And he died, and so that's everything else that goes on, that we need to be accountable for our actions and stuff. And I'm not, I'm holding you guys up and responsible, and be back behind you when you do the things that are dealing to listen to the people and work with them. Like this mask, it's a, to me, it's a muzzle to keep people quiet and stuff. And so that's why, one reason I won't wear a mask is that, as I say, people got to feel comfortable. They got to feel comfortable with their leaders and stuff like that, and we've got to support our police department, the fire departments, and all that's important. That we follow those rules and listen and help, and our community, make this community great again. I'm going to bring one subject up I don't think anybody knows about, is Juan Corona. He has killed 25 people 25 years ago in Sutter County. I don't know if everybody's around here, been around long enough to know about any of that. But he's saying, he's in prison for his life and stuff, but just like, I've been around here long enough to see a lot of people killed for no reason, for, indeed. So I think we've got to stand up and get the people that want to push drugs, get them out, get them in prison where they belong and stuff and stuff. If they want to be an American and be a citizen of America, they better stand up and support it, and our veterans too. And so then I'm not giving my life to just to stand up here and make myself public. I want people to realize, we've got to be accountable for our actions, each one of us. We all go before God Almighty, and we got to, don't go, I don't like to say go like a motorboat, going butt, 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 because God turns all our butts and stuff. So I'm no different than anybody else, but I say, I'm not usually one to step forward, but I think certain things that need to be stood out and brought up between our governors destroying this country. And the president, they, they call him a president, I don't call him that, because I didn't vote for him. He's not in there legitimately. But I think if you give me this time to talk with you and listen and help, and give people encouragement with the responsibility that you guys have on, and you're taking a big oath to step forward, take on this responsibility, we want to support you and stuff, and when you're not, we're not supporting you, then we're going to need to find out why we're not supporting you. Work together as a team, not as an individual. So that's about all I have to say and stuff. Biggest thing, other thing, is abortion. That's, I'm dead set against abortion. This state allows people to kill babies? Excuse me. That's just wrong. I don't care what any kind of judge or any woman thinks, it's her right. It's not her right. God's right to take the child, not hers. If she can't handle her life, then she should be have fixed, so she can't have kids anymore. She's not going to be accountable. That's all I have to say on those subjects and stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. Appreciate your comments and your service. Thank you. Next, Gary Trekey. Did I say the last name correctly, sir? Trekey.
Afternoon. My name's Gary Trekey. I just want to talk to you folks about Johnson Avenue in South Yuba City. We have a road back down there that Mr. Diara hooked onto without a permit. He took out almost three to five acres of almonds, and I think he's going to put a truck stop over there. I don't know that. But Johnson Avenue is only about a one yard, one, one car road. And it's not wide enough without you, if there's two trucks, two cars, you got to pull off in the dirt. And if it's wet, you got to pull off in the mud. So I'd like to have you guys check, check in on that. The code enforcement guy is supposed to bring two, something to you guys and let you know what he's come up with. But I just thank you for your time and appreciate what you do, and God bless all of you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. C O, is Liz Mallon here? Or I missed her. Oh, you're back there. Can you go ahead and take the gentleman's name and information and make sure we follow up with him? All right, thank you. Next up is Liz Cervantes. Keeping it clean.
Keeping it G. Liz Cervantes, District Five, keeping it G today.
Okay.
Already been at Yuba County. That was a very fruitful, good meeting.
Good.
Did the right thing, like you guys did weeks ago, and we appreciate that. So I see John Shallowitz here, and I don't want to pick on anybody, especially not John, because I like him. Can't spell his last name, but I like him. So I'm just floating this across you all. No more taxes, right? So we don't want any more taxes, but the fire guys scare me, especially out in Sutter Fire and where I am out there, right? So I wanted to make everybody aware today of what happened on April 1st, 2019. Yuba County began collecting an additional 1% sales tax on purchases in unincorporated areas. The tax was estimated to bring in an additional 4.3 million annually for public safety. The revenue was to be placed in a special fund and an oversight committee created to ensure the public that revenues would go as promised. This tax ordinance was placed on the ballot November 6th, 2018, as a general tax needing only a simple majority, 50% plus one, versus a special tax that requires the two-thirds, yes. General taxes go into the general fund and are dispersed at the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors. That's you guys. You knew that, though. Special taxes go to one or two specified needs and can only be used for those objectives. The voting process differences are outlined in propositions 13 and 218, along with section 577 of the U.S. Government Code. At the two-year mark on April 20, or April 1st, 2021, so next week, Measure K may now have taken an additional $10 million from Yuba County consumers. However, the funds collected have never been spent since the state appeals court has yet to decide whether the tax is legal. Yuba County Superior Court Judge Stephen Barrier ruled against the county, saying that Measure K was written and promoted as a special tax, needing a two-thirds voter approval. The Board of Supervisors then voted to appeal Barrier's ruling. What I'm trying to illustrate to Sutter County is we need to learn from what happened in Yuba County with Measure K. It was an illegal tax. It was presented incorrectly, and the voters have been on the hook. So this will be two years next week, and I just, I don't have any problem with you guys putting something on the ballot, but let's make sure that it's transparent and it is stated as what it is going to be used for. Okay? No foul language? I'm good?
Yes, great job. We appreciate that list. All right.
No fobs?
Good job, good job. Okay, and good comments, really good comments, actually. Thank you. Next up, Courtney Allen.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, guys. So I just wanted to make a comment again about your guys' health officer, Dr. Lou. Must sound like a broken record at this point. I wanted to kind of reiterate what, what Jason said. It's like after weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, you would think that, you know, there would at least be a comment or, you know, something on the agenda or something to, to address all the public comments that have been made. But it kind of feels like everything that's addressed during public comment falls on deaf ears. And, you know, Dr. Lou, she hasn't been a good or fruitful health officer in Yuba Sutter, and that's saying it very lightly. She compared... She compares the coronavirus to tuberculosis. She has had sheriffs confront people at their homes. She has closed businesses. She has not listened to you all and the city officials. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of city and county officials who have told me that she, she directly just, she directly, I don't know what the word is, she puts down any idea. And she, she's running this county, to be honest. And so because you guys have been so silent with our grievances and complaints about your guys' health officer, we've created a constituency petition. And so you guys can see that it's not just 10 people, and I promise you that, that between Yuba and Sutter, there are thousands of people who are going to sign this petition. And I don't know if at that point you guys will listen to your constituency and fire Dr. Lou and get a different health officer who doesn't act so brash, who doesn't listen to the elected officials who we elected. Um, I don't know at what point you guys are willing to really listen to the people on this issue. But I hope after, you know, a few thousand signatures might loosen you guys up. So anyways, I wanted to let you know that that is in effect, and I hopefully wanted to let Dr. Lou know that that's also in effect. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Also, Courtney, thank you for meeting with each of us individually. We appreciated that, and I know we spent some quality time together going over your concerns, and we'll continue to address them as we move along, okay? All right, thank you. Next, Kimberly Reinhardt.
Hello, Kimberly Reinhardt, District Two. I am here also to implore you to rescind all the public health orders that relate to COVID-19 guidelines. They are completely unconstitutional on the face of them. They've taken away freedoms that are, are God-given freedoms that are delineated in our U.S. Constitution. And therefore, there cannot be any orders that allow any of those freedoms to be taken away, ever. I don't care if the California Legislature a couple decades ago said, hey, in case of emergencies, now we get to suspend freedoms. That is wrong. It was wrong, and that should all be repealed. We here in Sutter County could at least choose that here in Sutter County, we aren't going to follow those unconstitutional state of emergency orders from the state. Masks, I want to bring up masks again because it was mentioned last time when I talked about it that Cal OSHA is threatening the people of Sutter County with fines if employees are not always wearing masks. So we, the people of Sutter County, are threatened with $90,000 per occurrence if any county employee is found not wearing a mask at any time during their work hours. Uh, that's extortion. It's wrong in every way. These masks are the big con, they are, it is the big lie that they protect from viruses. I read the, the details of the box that's outside, and every one of these boxes says this, so I'm not putting blame on whoever bought this box of masks, it's all the mask boxes. Number one says, "The mask does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection." They're not made for that. The virus, all virus particles are smaller and can get through these masks that we are being forced to wear by OSHA. I am asking you to stand up and stand tall and stand strong for the people of Sutter County and especially for our employees who are putting their health at risk by wearing these masks and being forced to by threat of $90,000 fines for the people. I'm asking you to stand and say no to the state of something that is unhealthy for our employees and unconstitutional on the very face of it. Taking away our own bodily freedom, wearing a mask is actually officially defined as a medical procedure. We have no right to demand medical procedures on our employees and on, and on the people of Sutter County at all. So I want the public health orders rescinded because they're unconstitutional. They take away the freedoms listed in Amendment One of the Constitution, and they take away freedoms in Amendment Four, Amendment Five, Amendment 14. At the very least, they break all kinds of our basic amendment freedoms of U.S. Constitution. Help, help us to help you, honestly. If, if you don't know how to stand up and say no to something that OSHA is bringing down from the state, ask the people to stand with you. We will stand with you, we will find ways. We, we have been working with constitutional lawyers wanting to fight all this stuff across America. We, we will help our own county officials do exactly that. Please, please stand for us and with us, help us to find answers. Please stop putting our employees' health at risk by demanding masks. And Oregon OSHA has actually put out regulations out for public comment right now, public comment ends April 2nd, to make all of these rules permanent. Permanent, not, not when the COVID pandemic is over, but literally permanent. Permanent masking, permanent social distancing at businesses, retail, gyms, spas, bars, restaurants, farmers markets, schools, daycares, parks, beaches, contact, contact tracing, and some mandatory vaccination rules for employees. It's, it's terrifying what is trying to come down from above, from the state, from the federal. It is worldwide, it is global. And the emperor has no clothes. These masks do not stop the virus. I just want to shout that every store I walk in, that the mask doesn't work. The emperor has no clothes. It's the big lie, and we are all succumbing to it. And now we're, and now our county's being threatened. And I, I'm, I'm asking you to stand up and, and help us and allow us to stand up with you. We will back you up. If you stand for us and with us and stand for the Constitution, we will reelect you, and we will be your biggest fans. Please, please do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next speaker, Genesis.
Hello, Supervisors, I'll be brief. Basically, I want to echo the sentiments that have been brought to you already regarding the health orders in this county. At this point, they are completely unnecessary, they are completely unconstitutional. They are degrading to our personal freedoms and rights. Anyone who tries to tell another person what they should do with their bodies, that in and of itself, on its face, is an absolute violation of our God-given rights over our own bodies. And it starts with a mask, and we know where it ends. We know where it ends with the, the injection, the, uh, the gene modification therapy, which they're calling a vaccine. So I implore you to rescind all active health orders regarding COVID-19. And that's what I have for now, and I have some more on the other agenda items, so I'll be that, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, let's see, CEO Smith, right here, where'd he go? Oh, he took off on me. Hold on, just, hold on just a moment. Okay. Did you, did you want to go ahead and introduce Dr. Lou for some comments?
Yeah, so Dr. Lou is online with us, and based upon the comments that were made over the past several weeks, I thought it, I would ask her to address some of the issues. She's not going to have an answer, I guess, for every single question, but I, staff sent her a list of some of the questions that have been asked, so that she would be able to address those today. So, Dr. Lou, are you with us online?
Yes.
So I'd say, Chairman, is it okay, she's?
Yeah, that would be great, but I'd like her to make comments, but I don't think we have the time for Q and A with, like, I still have maybe 20 cards altogether for comment coming up. So if we could just have her make comments, and those who want to comment on her comments, make some notes, we'll make sure that we get her to respond to you, so, you know, we can do that. I just, I just don't want this to be the whole meeting, if you could please respect that, because there's just a lot of things on the items, on the agenda today. Okay? Go ahead, Dr. Lou.
Uh, thank you, Supervisor Flores. So I was asked to discuss about the vaccine rollout and the eligibility for specifically, um, uh, public safety staff. So let me walk you through, starting in late December 2020. That's when the Pfizer, Moderna, COVID-19 vaccines were both approved. And based on CDC guidance and the state guidance at that time, well, the rollout started with direct healthcare workers, and then it expanded to those 65 years and older, and then finally to those within the three frontline sectors of food and agriculture, education and childcare, and of course, emergency services, including public safety officers. We were able to open up to those three frontline sectors as of February 20th for those 50 to 64 within those three categories. And then by March 6th, we were able to open up to all ages within those three frontline sectors. And then with the advent approval of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine on February 28th, 2021, we were able to offer that vaccine in particular to mobile transient population, including homeless, unhoused, migrant farm workers and, um, excuse me, inmates, and also offer the Johnson &amp; Johnson to the correction officers and detention officer at that time. So we're seeing a robust uptake and actually interest in the Johnson &amp; Johnson, likely because of the one dose and their advantage over the other two, which are two-dose series. So that's the first topic. The second topic that was relayed to me was the interest in clarifying quarantine orders and when quarantine orders are needed. So quarantine orders are needed when a person is infectious and has the potential to infect others, whether it be tuberculosis, or COVID-19, or pertussis, many, many other communicable disease, especially the respiratory communicable diseases, pose a high public health risk. So quarantine orders are not generated often, they're actually very rare. But in the setting of when these rare circumstances do occur, a quarantine order is needed, and then we ask for the assistance of the Sheriff Department to serve them. And we cooperate and collaborate on a close basis to determine the necessity of the quarantine order, and we ensure that they know the appropriate clinical information, and they are given the appropriate PPE, including, say, N95 masks, in order to protect them adequately as they serve the order. But the order should be served fairly rarely, like I stated. And then the third topic that was raised my attention, that was asked of me to brief on, is in regards to the safety and the efficacy of mask wearing. Again, our body of knowledge as the world in regards to mask wearing as it applies to COVID-19 has evolved in the past 12 months. So we know a lot more about the safety and efficacy of mask wearing in March 2021 than we know back in 2020. So initially, we thought you didn't have to wear masks unless you were symptomatic, using the experience of the influenza vaccine. But then, um, studies from multiple other countries have realized that mask wearing is actually very, very helpful, what's called source control. So source control means that when you wear a mask, you contain your respiratory droplets, and not just those kind of large respiratory droplets of greater than 20 microns, but also aerosol droplets, less than 10 microns or less, are contained. Not 100%, but a lot, majority of them are contained when you wear a mask to protect the opposite person. So this is very much about respect. Respect for the other, respect for your, um, um, community for you to wear that mask. So that was the body of knowledge several months back. Then, yeah, by November 2020, you saw CDC issued out further clarifying evidence that now they can confidently save the data that we'd be able to collect by that time in fall 2020, that mask wearing not only protects the opposite person as a form of source control, but it also protects you. So when you wear a mask, at least a double-layered, well-fitted mask, you have the, um, a protection where the filtration of the microns coming through into the mask is decreased. Again, not 100%, but much less than if you do not wear a mask. There is, of course, some concern about what if you wear a mask and the buildup of carbon dioxide. So the CDC has definitively said that that is not the case. So essentially, what you want to think through is the size of carbon dioxide molecule is much smaller, can easily pass through multiple layers of a cough mask or even an N95 mask, and that is not a concern in terms of adequate air exchange. But on the opposite end, it does filter out the larger size of a COVID-19 viral particle, right? And the CDC has also come out very definitively to say that mask wearing is safe for those who have underlying chronic pulmonary disease, such as asthma. And I want to reiterate the quote from Dr. Rochelle Walensky, the CDC Director, who even as recently as this morning came out to saying that continued vigilance to mask wearing is critical as we focus on aggressive vaccine rollout. But we're not at the point yet when we have herd immunity that we can peel back aggressively these key non-pharmacologic interventions, especially of mask wearing in public. This is very critical to not only protect ourselves, but protect our fellow community residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lou, for those comments. And again, to the public, if you have any questions or concerns, be sure to give them to us, and we'll, we'll address those with Dr. Lou as well. And you brought some up today, which we will also address.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Lou, you on the phone still? Dr. Lou?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
You know, the CDC also says who I can have in my house, the house that I own, not the house the CDC owns. All right? I hear where you're going with this whole mask mandate, and I don't care for it. Because we're getting to be a dictatorship here on what we can and can't do. All right? What someone does is their freedom to do what and when where, all right? Now, I can't go into Liz Cervantes' house if I'm not invited in there. That's her house, her rules. If she's got a rule that says, "Wear a mask," I'm going to put my mask on, because that's your house, there's your rules. If I have the same thing in my house, I'd ask you to follow the same directions. But here's the thing. The CDC coming out and saying that, um, we recommend that, what I'm getting at is, it doesn't hurt you, it kind of, you kind of feel that in what people have been saying through the last few months over the year, that this is only a stepping stone into, we're going to tell you when and what you can do. And it's like the state shutting down restaurants or businesses and saying that, "We expect you to pay 100% of your taxes on time, but we're going to shut you down." It doesn't make any sense. Now, you want to pay my taxes, that's fine. Now, the other thing is, if you've been to these restaurants and businesses around town, you notice a lot of them stayed open. They didn't shut down. Now, Applebee's and Chili's, they shut down because they're big corporate stores and they got to follow their bylaws. But the mom-and-pop stores, they stayed open. It didn't look like they were open, but they were open because they didn't want to lose their business that they fought hard to build 20, 30, 40 years ago. My dad started our company in 1946 after he got out of World War II. And we had a horrible few months there for a while because it took up to 10 days to get a test and your results back. You can't manufacture if you don't have bodies. All right? I get no apology from someone, I get, it is what it is. I got a guy calling me on the phone to yell at me right now where his disc is because I've been waiting for tires and wheels at the Port of Oakland because it's a mess everywhere, and everyone blames COVID, COVID, COVID. That's the go-to right now, COVID. And it's getting old. All right? And I just, personally, I'd like to see it on the agenda to get rid of this mask mandate, to get out of this health field that we're in right now because our numbers are coming down, and it blows me away. I don't, I mean, I, because to me, what I see, not a lot's changed in the last six, seven months. So I see, I don't know if these tests are, are less stringent, what they're testing for, whatever, and, but I do know people that have lost loved ones from COVID, so it is very real. It's very, very real. And it breaks my heart to see those ones that have lost loved ones. But at the same time, I respect everyone and their right to go to a movie or go to dinner or go into a store, and we protect our less vulnerable and our loved ones. I mean, here we are, you know, we have this dis- I mean, here we are, you know, we have this December, the vaccine comes out and we wait months to get our teachers vaccinated, you know. And oh my gosh, the harm we're gonna have on these kids right now. I mean, you hear all and all and all, you know, we got young ones. Our kids are a year behind. And for those that come from poor, poverty-stricken neighborhoods, and we have a lot of those here in Sutter County, they're not going to have the resources to catch up. They can't afford to pay for tutors and so forth to catch them up. It's gonna be devastating on them. You're gonna see it, it's gonna be ugly all over the country. It's gonna be like this. It's gonna be very, very bad. But like I said, we lost a lot of loved ones and it's very serious. But at the same time, we have to move past this. And we, I mean, come on, masks, it's, it's... I just don't like where you're going on this whole mask deal because when I hear masks and the CDC's giving out all these test studies that, "Oh, it's very simple to wear one." We're not Hong Kong, we're not China, you know? And hopefully, we'll never be that way. All right? But that's how I feel. Thanks, guys, for listening.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Next, we, I have a card here from David Valdez. And I want David, you to know that this, we don't have jurisdiction over the city of Live Oak. So we can't actually hear this in here in the Sutter County, in our board meeting. So just wanted to let you know, okay? If you have any questions on that, we can speak to legal counsel over there by CAO. Yeah. Okay, with that, we are actually gonna take a five-minute break. So let's make it a strict five minutes and everybody come back in five.
Next five, we'll try to keep to five. How's that? All right, hopefully, hopefully, everybody had a good stretch. And we're now going to move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or which prior policy direction has been given to staff and they require only routine action by the board. The chairman will advise the audience that the matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matters separately. Okay, before we, I entertain a motion, I will note that items nine, 10, 11, and 14 will be pulled for some public comment. So if I could have a motion on items 12 of consent, less or minus nine, 10, 11, and 14.
I make a move.
To the chair.
I'll move.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes.
14 is a public hearing, so there will be comments.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, so nine, 10, nine, 10, 11, and then 14 when we get to it, so nine, 10, 11, sorry. So.
Still moved.
A second? You have a second?
That was a motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions or opposition? Okay, there being none, the motion carries. And we'll start with discussion on item nine. And item nine is the acceptance of the recertification documents for the presidential general election. And first speaker is Genesis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to basically say, you know, I understand that here in Sutter County, we're using Dominion machines. Maybe you can verify if that's correct or not. This entire election, especially the presidential portion specifically, as we've seen the countless evidence which has been ignored in the courts to show that this election is absolutely fraudulent, the presidential election at least, that portion of the election is absolutely fraudulent. So I don't know how much that applies to our county of Sutter right here. And I would like that to be noted on the record, at least, if you are going to accept this, and I don't know that I recommend that you do or don't, but if you do accept it, I want to at least note it on the record that the presidential portion of the election is absolutely fraudulent. There's ample amount of evidence to show that, to prove that, which has been ignored in the courts, and that does not mean that we need to ignore it here in the county. At this level, with our local voice, our voice, I believe, needs to be heard, that this election, the presidential portion, was fraudulent. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Genesis, appreciate it. Next is Jason Khan. Jason, there he is.
Yes, thank you, counsel, Jason Khan, Uba City. Didn't even know nothing about this until I seen it on the agenda here and asked people about it, what the heck was going on, and realized we found some more tickets or more votes. I vote against this. I do not want you guys to accept this. I agree with Genesis. It's kind of obvious what's going on. We can't take part with what's going on. Everything is kind of black and white, is fraudulent, what's been happening, and we don't need to taint our county with what's been happening. The state, unfortunately, is a blue state because of the big counties that we have with LA and San Francisco, but our little county, I believe, is red, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Next up is Kimberly Reinhardt.
Hello, I am looking at the staff report for this and says, after the November 3rd, 2020 presidential general election had been certified by the registrar of voters, Butte County sent ballots which were discovered after they had certified their election results. No Sutter County race outcomes were impacted by these additional ballots. Thank goodness, I mean, I'm very grateful for that. I am not researched up on all the nitty-gritty details of election law. So seems to me like that's one more fishy thing out of the thousands of fishy things that happened in the November 3rd election. May not be, so I'm not accusing anyone in Butte or Sutter specifically, I don't know enough about it from the staff report, but man, I believe that we need to go back to hand-counting paper ballots, no more computer systems whatsoever, whether we have Dominion systems or a system that has not been questionable or accused yet. Computers are hackable, period. We know that computers are hackable, and now we know that, well, again, we should go back to hand-counting paper ballots. Happened for 200 years before computers were created. That is something that I believe I probably will be pushing for over the next year, is that we go back to a hand-counting system, paper ballot system, that can be confirmed, reconfirmed, confirmed, reconfirmed, and no more computers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the public comments I have on this topic. Does anyone from the board have any comments?
Through the chair, Donna, you know, we've all read the staff report, and this is more, if you can answer the question here, is with everything from your office, I've been in your office, all the supervisors have been in the office on election night and so forth, and I'm telling you right now, it's very thorough in what they do and so forth, but so this is this outcome that we're voting on tonight, this recertification. Now, the whole Butte County, this doesn't have any implications from our side, but this is more on the Butte County. That's correct, isn't it?
Correct, it's a procedural step that had to be taken due to additional ballots being found in Butte County. They had certified their election when they collected all of their outside drop boxes. They did that after certification, Sutter County does it before certification to verify that all ballots are in. They missed a step, honestly, on their part. Those ballots were discovered, there was some ballots found for Sacramento County and a few throughout the state, actually, because of Chico State and a lot of people dropping ballots off in that area. So there was, there were ballots that were done that were, that they had discovered after certification, they sent them to the respective counties, they mailed them overnight to us, we received those, verified that those voters had not voted previously, and then processed those and had to recertify with Secretary of State's office, and then send, I had to recertify as well, and then that's what this adoption is.
What about the days they voted on and everything, and the registration, everything?
Those three voters had no, there was no problem with their registration. They in good faith turned their ballot in. You can turn your ballot in anywhere in California for state law, and it gets forwarded to us.
I'm talking about, you hear all this in the news, you know, people turning their ballots the day after election, three days afterwards, and people, you know, oh, we found these or whatever. I just want to make sure they were dated correctly, everything.
They were dated correctly. They were dated correctly, and they were, they were verified by the Butte County registrar that they were indeed, their mistake, and they had locked the box, but they just hadn't picked the box up, so no ballots could be added after 8 o'clock on election day.
So not your mistake, their mistake?
Correct.
Through the chair. Thank you, yes, go ahead.
Donna, I just want to make sure I understand, so this was a Sutter County ballot filed by a legal Sutter County voter, but they put it in the Butte County box, correct?
Correct.
So, yeah, we got to count the vote.
Yes, it very well could have.
And it was, and it was a certified, the signature matched the signature?
Most definitely, yes.
Okay.
Those were the votes that came in overnight?
All right, thank you, supervisors, and I actually missed a public speaker, and so I'm going to call up Courtney Allen.
Thank you for calling me back up. I just, I did think this was weird when I, when I looked at this on the agenda, that, you know, that we're recertifying the election results based on late ballots, and then I noted that the prior board action had been, results have been accepted for prior elections, and that was just kind of a red flag as far as integrity laws with voting, you know, to the point that we have to recertify an election because of late ballots. You know, it just, it brought up the question of integrity, and it also brought up the question as of why this was on the consent calendar. And so I definitely wanted to, you know, bring up those points and maybe see if something like this is controversial, because it has to do with our elections, and, you know, I think it's easy to say, this is, this is a small thing, this is petty, but I do think that voting and elections are a big controversial topic right now, and integrity of voting is really a big topic right now, and I think that things like this shouldn't be put on the consent calendar, I think there should be more transparency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Courtney. Any further comments from the board? Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
If you approve, item nine.
Is there a second?
I second it, just in the fact that our staff made sure the verification and so forth.
You have a first and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions, there being none, the motion carries. Thank you. We're going to move on now to discussion on item number 10, and I have some public speaker cards to call up here, and the first up is Courtney Allen. She was just here, might as well stay up there, Courtney.
Yeah, for this item, similar comment, I was a little bit uncomfortable with the fact that this was on a consent calendar, and in addition, it had mentioned in the language on there that it, there was no need to put this into a committee hearing. If you read through this proclamation, the language is really, really bad. It talks about how COVID has brought about racial inequalities and about how, you know, racism is the real virus that we're all under. It was just weird, it's weird, and I think the fact that it wasn't put in a committee hearing, that you guys were going to sign in under a consent calendar, is really weird, and I had questions for, honestly, the author, and I thought that was, that was not okay. So I don't know if you guys have even had the chance to read it, based on what I've seen of it, but the language is not good, and, and I think it should be addressed, I think you guys should read it, and I would not vote for it if I were you at all, I think the language is horrible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Next is Genesis.
Yeah, the language of this advisory is really, really bad. Okay, I'm on the wrong thing here. Apologies. Okay, I got it here. Yeah, it says whereas, let's see, COVID-19 pandemic measles, I have a question, what is disasters caused by human activity? That's the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth, whereas. And the sixth one says, whereas, public health action together with scientific and technological advances has played a major role in reducing and, in some cases, eliminating the spread of infectious diseases and in establishing today's disease surveillance and control system, systems. So are we talking contact tracing here? I don't believe in anything that has contact tracing as a major component of the way to deal with any type of said disease, especially for the fact that those measures start out as, as opt-in, and then they eventually become mandatory, and that's the way that those things come in. And especially, the couple more down, whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has illuminated and exacerbated racial inequalities, and a growing number of local state governments and public health leaders have declared racism a public health crisis. This is just, this is abhorrent, I'm sorry, it's absolutely abhorrent that this is in a declaration that is coming from our county, and I recommend that you do not accept this resolution as it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Genesis, for your comments, and next up is Kimberly Reinhardt.
All right, ditto, ditto to what Courtney and Genesis said, so I won't repeat. When I first saw this on the agenda, I thought, am I, am I seriously in the Twilight Zone right now, and as my kids would say, are we being punked? Like, after a year of being shut down by public health department officials across the nation, now we are being told we need to celebrate them? What is happening? They have, they, the public health departments of our states have single-handedly suspended our freedoms delineated in our constitution, and now we're supposed to say, yay, thank you so much, you guys are awesome and amazing. And, and again, the local public health departments are the ones who actually wrote the orders that shut down our economies and shut down our schools, so they are the ones who did that to us, and they are the ones that should be rescinding them now, they should never have been allowed by our counties to shut down businesses and shut down schools for a virus. It's not the way that a community should handle any viruses that come, that come and threaten our communities. There are many other ways that public health has not discussed on our website at all. Sutter County does not have any other answers other than masks, social distance, and now it's double mask, great. Just make it even harder for me to breathe and actually breathe in oxygen and breathe out my CO2, makes no sense at all. I don't need studies to tell me, I actually know, because when I put the mask on, I cannot breathe as well, and then I start to have a panic attack. So masks are not good. Public health is focused on that, and then focused on vaccine, they call it a vaccine, Genesis had mentioned, it's not actually traditionally defined vaccine, it's a genetic modifying drug. And, and there's, and public health is not making aware of actual very inexpensive treatments for COVID that anyone, even the poor, could afford on their own without even needing health insurance or assistance. Independent doctors across the nation are being silenced because money is, is, is driving the message, and money is driving the message on media. So local doctors here in our region have actually started independently publishing a newspaper called The COVID Times in big letters, I know you can all see, it's easy to treat, it's easy to treat, it's easy to treat. Why isn't our public health department saying that and getting that message out? This, this newspaper comes out, I think like once a month, huge, very easy to read, very affordable things that we can do for prevention and that we can do for treatment, and local doctors.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, Kimberly, appreciate it.
Yes, local doctors themselves are preventing and treating for hundreds of people in our region, and public health doesn't mention that at all. Please do not celebrate public health departments of America. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'll bring that back to, for board discussion, any?
I personally would like to make a motion to amend this. First of all, we are working on some stuff on a healthy Uba Sutter area. We've been talking about this for the last couple of months, some incentives to get healthy and so forth, but I love it, I would just like to see paragraph 5, 6, and 8 taken out. If you read it, and you'll see, I think you guys will understand those five, those three different paragraphs, because to me, they, they're, I think they're counterintuitive what this means, so. The whereas is yes, number 5, 6, and 8, and give you guys a few minutes to read those, but if you read those, you'll see, like, I mean.
You'll second the motion. Okay, we have a first and a second of the motion, does anyone want to amend or change them?
Can I make a friendly amendment, or, sorry?
Oh, sure.
So I was just going to ask if we could actually move to table this for further review, maybe bring it back to the next meeting.
Would you guys, through the chair, was it specific for that date of April 5th? May not be able to continue.
We don't have a meeting for that, so if we're going to do this at all, might as well do it today.
And we could always add something, sorry, through the chair.
Go ahead.
We could always add something down the road, too, Carm, if you, if you come up with something, but like I said, take a minute, I mean, it's up to the chairman.
Yeah.
If you want to read.
I guess we can take, let's take five minutes and read over the proclamation, and I know all of us did read it, but they brought up some really good points, valid points today, and I think it's a good idea to go ahead and read the proclamation. So want to set a timer, Donna, for five minutes, and we'll test their reading skills up here? Okay?
And, here it is. Yeah. I didn't bark someone's out, but.
Page 10A. 10A.
It's page.
Oh, package page 82.
Yeah. That's one thing good about, see what I do, Nick? I make the page numbers on each of them, so then I did a scan through it really quick. As I'm doing, going through, I.
The underlying statement of what the vaccine holds true for everybody, but we need to not okay this. Once again, it goes under, let's, for what we believe in, what our county's for, and the constitution, what's right. You know, thank you.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate your comments. Kimberly Reinhardt.
Ditto to Genesis and Jason, I'm going to try not to repeat. Board alternatives, the board can opt not to approve the MOU, however, this would jeopardize Sutter County's. Sutter County's receipt of COVID-19 vaccine. I say that is just fine. It is under emergency use authorization only. It has not been proven, it has not been approved. It is dangerous and very high risk for people to take this drug right now. So I'm absolutely fine with no more vaccines of this nature entering into Sutter County. So if you don't approve it and we don't get any more vaccine, let's wait and see. Let's let everybody else be the guinea pigs and the human experiments, and we'll wait and see how it goes, because if you do read some alternative news, it's not going so well for healthy people, for many healthy people across America that are being injured by this new experimental pharmaceutical that is not even a traditional vaccine. My second point is that it is not the county's business or job to administer vaccines at all, ever. No taxpayer money should be used for any medical pharmaceuticals at all, ever. That, ever. This is a wrong use of taxpayer money. This should be between an individual and their private doctor. They should be giving a full, complete medical history to their private doctor in order to get an actual recommendation from their private doctor, and then have a pharmaceutical prescribed and administered by their private doctor who knows their entire full medical history. This is wrong. It's wrong. I know this has been done for a long time, and public health has administered vaccines for longer than COVID. It was wrong then, too, and it should stop. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And, let's see, oh, I'm not gonna miss you this time, Courtney. I got you. Okay, Courtney Allen.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to point out again, I think I have an issue with the person who's submitting this to the consent calendar. This is not a non-controversial item whatsoever. This memorandum of understanding is, it's an agreement with a third-party agency that pretty much we are gonna do whatever they tell us to do in hopes that they will give us vaccines. And let's, let's play, I'm gonna play devil's advocate and say I'm in favor of vaccines, which I'm not whatsoever. I'm gonna say I am. If you read through this, it pretty much says that the third-party agency under, pretty much, is not going to promise that they'll be able to give you vaccines whatsoever, that there is no minimum of vaccines that they have to give you. And within that, you have to use all the vaccines they give you, and they can give you as many or as few as they want to, and you have to use them all, which in my opinion is the beginning of mandatory vaccines or pushed vaccines from people, anybody who goes to Ride Out or any place like that, right? Because we have to use these vaccines. In addition to that, they say that they reserve the right to change the vaccine at any point. And they get to, they get to be in charge of our vaccination policies. They submit us to tracking, agency tracking, under their third-party agency. This is a third-party, this isn't even state government. This is a private company that gets all of our county's health records, that they have access to these records for three years after we decide we want to terminate this memorandum of understanding. And then it says pretty much you do what the TPA tells you to do. In my opinion, this is a horrible memorandum of understanding. They pretty much say we'll give you nothing, but you have to submit under all of these rules in red tape. This is a horrible thing to join. If we're gonna join stuff, I could give you stuff to join, you know what I mean? This is, this is not something that we should be approving, and in addition, I think that this is not something that belongs on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. So with that, I'll bring this discussion back to the board, or any comments?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
You know, for everyone speaking, we have an obligation to fight for this vaccine, and people have the right to take the vaccine or not take it as well. And there's a lot of people that do want to take it, and they have the right to take their flu vaccine, the COVID vaccine, any vaccine right there. And we're doing whatever we can to have it available for those that do want to take it, and they have the right not to. They don't have to take it. So it kind of goes both ways. If we're gonna talk about Constitution, let's talk about, let's throw everything out there. They got a right to take it or not take it, and there's a lot of elderly out there that can't afford it, and that are, you know, and we're doing everything we can to get it there. There's been a lot of clinics where people are on a waiting list, you know, just to try to get in, and they're going to their primary health doctors and so forth to get in. It's really tough. We've had people coming from other counties trying to sneak in, and we're like, hey, we gotta give it to the people here, you know? This is what we're only allotted for. So we are, even up here, we're fighting for everything we can get allotted to, so the people of Sutter County can get the vaccine if they choose to get it or not.
Through the chair.
Thank you, supervisor. Supervisor Conant?
So, you know, if we don't sign this memorandum of understanding, it could jeopardize our ability to get the vaccine, and it could jeopardize the ability for people to make that choice. Like Supervisor Vigmar was saying, we don't want to jeopardize the choice of people to decide to make their decision, what they want to do. And so I think it's for the public interest to sign this memorandum of understanding, so therefore I will move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there any further comments from the other supervisors at this point? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed or abstentions? Okay, there being none, the motion carries. You gentlemen? Move on now to item number, where are we at? Oh, 12, oh, well, 12's already been done. So, okay, that's it. That finishes the consent calendar. I think that's a new record, oh my gosh, time. Okay, lost my mind, where am I now? Okay. So I believe we approved everything on consent, right? We did every item? Okay, thank you. And now I'm going to close the Board of Supervisors meeting and re-adjourn, or adjourn the board of supervisors meeting and open up as the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Governing Board. There's a separate agenda that you have with you for the public, for the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority Board. We'll open up the meeting for this board, and we'll go, we'll let the roll call stand. Is that okay, Madam Clerk? Okay, great. Let the roll call stand, and then we'll open this up with a, we'll call, we'll do the consent calendar first, so entertain a motion for approval of consent.
Move to approve, Conant.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed or abstentions? There being none.
I'll abstain.
You're gonna abstain?
Yeah, because it was, I wasn't on the board at the time when these.
When those done? Okay, we have one abstention by Supervisor Baines, and then the motion carries to, for the consent calendar. We have one appearance item, and that's Tanya Beebe is gonna speak to us.
Hello.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, I am.
Okay.
I was too far walking into this.
Are you up there, over there?
So here I am, here I am. I'm here today to present the 2021 Sutter County IHSS Public Authority Budget, and we are a little late. We brought a new position to you in October that you approved in late October, and then getting everything aligned with the county budget, and then getting back to the public authorities, so here we are in March. So I'll be seeing you again in a couple of months.
Okay.
But we're requesting a budget of $821,083. This is an increase of a little over $405,000 from our last 1920 budget, and that's primarily due to, with the memo of understanding with the United Domestic Workers Union with the IHSS providers that was approved. We are doing dental and vision benefits, and that was a little over $300,000 added to our budget. In addition to that, we've added a new account clerk. We have 1,200 IHSS providers, a little over that now, and we handle all the payroll, and we have three people in our office. So it's a lot. So that account clerk will now process the IHSS payroll. And we've moved, with COVID, we've moved to online provider orientation. So now all of our IHSS providers can go to our county website and go through their state mandated orientation without having to come into the office. We still do some contact with the providers to gather ID and verify identity, but otherwise everything is done through the online process. So that's really where the extra $400,000 came from this year.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board?
Move to approve the 2021 budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any abstentions or opposition? There being none, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Tanya. Appreciate the presentation. Yep. So at this point, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we're going to move back into the Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the public hearing, and our speaker is Doug Libby on this topic.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. The ordinance before you today will establish an annual licensing for the cultivation of industrial hemp with the Ag Department, and annual licensing requirement for processing facilities with the Development Services Department. The cultivation and processing of hemp is proposed to be allowed in the Ag District, the F Park District, which is located west of our rural community of Sutter, and M2 General Industrial District, which is also, can be viewed as our heavy industrial zone. And these three zones make up approximately 90% to 92% of the county's land. The proposed ordinance before you establishes a definition section, signage requirements for hemp cultivations that identify hemp is being grown on-site. It includes provisions for posting of a financial security for the destruction of non-compliant hemp crops, including Sheriff's Department costs whose assistance may be required. The ordinance provides for the adoption of fees, and staff has included as attachment three to your staff report, a suggestion for fees for the Ag Department Development Services and Sutter County Fire for the review of license applications and the review by fire of building permit applications for hemp processing facilities and fire inspections. Now, if an ordinance is approved, a resolution will be brought back before your board at a future meeting for consideration. The proposed ordinance declares that hemp cultivation or processing in violation of state law or local ordinance is a public nuisance. A remedy section is included specifying that the violations are subject to the county's ordinance code, chapter 87, that's our administrative penalty section, and includes the ability to forward violation cases to the district attorney's office to pursue remedies as may be available under the law. The ordinance includes a statement that it is the county's intent to be reimbursed for all time service and materials necessary to implement, administer, and enforce state law in this ordinance for this program. Now, the one area of the ordinance that has garnered the most attention, for obvious reasons, is the buffering standard. Staff has prepared two maps for you. There's maps behind you, behind the dais, and then out in the foyer.
Mr. Libby?
One of the maps shows the full county, and one being zoomed-in map showing our rural communities.
Mr. Libby?
Yes?
If we could pause for one moment?
Okay.
I just need to make sure that before we go into the substance of this ordinance, that any board members that need to take or say anything have that opportunity.
Yes, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote and the comment period and so forth in the communication of this. I, my mom does lease some land, so that is, so, thank you.
The maps show buffering from protected facilities such as city limit lines, churches, schools, and youth-oriented facilities. For these protected facilities, the buffer is measured from the exterior boundary of the protected parcel. It is important to recognize that maps do not show the proposed 500-foot buffering from any off-site dwelling unit, because we don't know where hemp may be processed or grown in those locations. The maps also show zoning other than Ag, F Park, and M2, where cultivation of processing of hemp would not be allowed. Now, it's important to recognize there is no uniform standard adopted by jurisdictions. Now, attachment one to your staff report is a spreadsheet and provides buffering standards from other jurisdictions in the state. It provides, and this provided for you as additional information. These standards vary quite a bit. It is ultimately your board's decision as to the extent of buffering you feel is appropriate for this new crop type in our community. The ordinance proposes a 1,000-foot buffer from incorporated city limit lines, schools, school evacuation sites, churches, childcare centers, hospitals, parks, youth-oriented facilities, and from the boundaries of the Sutter Point specific plan. Now, a question that staff has gotten quite a bit in the last few days is where, what's the genesis of the 1,000-foot buffer? Well, it comes from our existing adopted marijuana ordinance that prohibits cannabis cultivation from churches, schools, et cetera. However, in this proposed ordinance before you, we have added in city limit lines as well as the boundaries of the Sutter Point specific plan. Now, the ordinance proposes a 500-foot buffer from any off-site dwelling unit not owned by the licensee. The ordinance includes provision, so once a license is issued and continuously maintained in good standing, any new development of homes or sensitive receptors that would otherwise prevent cultivation or processing facility from complying with the requirements shall not affect the current licensee. So in other words, it's grandfathering clause for existing licensees. This provision would not apply to changes in jurisdictional boundaries, so city limit lines. So as a city annex is out further, the city's buffer would expand out further. The ordinance does not provide for grandfathering of existing hemp cultivations that do not conform to the proposed ordinance, because this would undermine the proposed standard. Additionally, the proposed ordinance does not include a variance option, because staff believes that it could ultimately undermine the adopted standard. Now, public comments that staff has received up until the distribution of your staff report were included in your staff report packet as an attachment. It includes citizen letters of concern as well as a letter of support for the ordinance from the Yuba Sutter Farm Bureau. Now, as I conclude, I just wanted to offer my thanks to our Ag Department staff for their collaborative work on the ordinance, as well as County Council's Office for their review and legal assistance in this matter. So that would conclude my comments unless there's any questions.
Okay, and.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So Doug, the only thing I saw in here that I, is there's no indoor grow provision, so if they're growing indoor, you'd have to stay 500 feet as well, correct?
Correct. The current ordinance before you does not make a distinction whether you're just an exterior or an indoor cultivator.
Okay, before we bring you back to the board, if I can open up the public hearing, and I have public comments on this matter. And we'll start with Richard Brown. Is there Richard Brown? Oh, there we go. No?
To the chair.
Yes.
He may be outside. I'm not sure. We may want to give it a moment, otherwise.
Richard Brown outside? Okay, I think this is Richard here. Richard?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great, okay. Go ahead and step up the rostrum and make your comments, sir.
My comment is that for a potential land buyer and home builder on some property, that I'd be concerned about this ordinance not being able to be, in fact, a provision to buy this property and build something on it. You would have to go look at the ordinance to see if people can go hemp around you. I mean, us people who don't appreciate the smell and the odorance 1,000 feet, the smell from this stuff is enormous. I live in Sutter. I live a mile away from a hemp plant, okay? I could smell this when the wind blows in my house and everything, you know? And the ordinance of keeping it intact around a community or school or people where you have to smell this stuff is, is to me a burden, you know? And if you have children, the children's concern of having to grow up and smell this every year when they're in there would be, to me, harmful to the children and stuff in the community around this, not being able to be this so close to people's homes, 1,000 feet, 500 feet from your house. Like I say, I'm a mile away, and I could smell this stuff when it was in flower, and it was overwhelming sometimes. So I would just like to say that I think the ordinance or another ordinance should be more feet away from communities or people, people's dwellings.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Anita, I can't read your last name in the writing here, but Elphick? Yeah, okay.
Hello, I'm Anita Elphick, and I'm here really against the whole process of having hemp grown in Sutter County. I do feel, and I can go through a whole list, and I think you probably all know what that list is, why it shouldn't be grown in Sutter County. But if you're gonna continue with this. But if you're going to continue with this, there needs to be changes in your policy. Distance is one, definitely. I know there in Sutter County have issues with homes in Sutter and also with schools. I know Windship is right next to one. 1,000 feet, though, is not going to cover it. It's probably 1,500. So, yeah, those things need to be looked at. The means of testing, I read the proposed ordinances, and the testing, I don't think, was clear enough as to who's responsible, how you're going to go about it. I see there's one test involved. The fee is $500. One test, I don't think, is going to cover it. I've seen this one grow that's doing right now, and I feel that they're not really following the guidelines of the state because you didn't have any for the county. If that is unacceptable, I would ask that you delay this for 30 to 45 days and let the people around these hemp growers, with the hemp growers, discuss this and see if they can come up with something that both parties can live with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Next speaker is Larry Munger. Miss you speaking up here, Larry.
Board, Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting us speak on this item. Sutter County is approximately 90% ag ground. It goes down to 80-some percent if you take out the Sutter bypass. With all this ground, what my really question is, is why do the growers have to come in close to the communities? What I really suggest is do a template around your, which we have around each community we have, your sphere of influence. Do a mile out and see what happens and go from there. 1,000 feet doesn't do a thing for smell. I mean, that's just absolutely ludicrous. I mean, you could smell it, and just like the one north of the high school right there. 1,000 feet, that's not going to do nothing. You'll be right back at it next year. What you need to do is bite the bullet and do it, just like we did the marijuana. The marijuana is growing all over the city and even in the communities, but we narrowed it down to 10 by 10 building and six plants. I don't know how many of you have got calls on it lately, but we were getting calls on it daily because of the smell. People were planting against the fence and whatever. But I really urge you guys to look at this really strongly and, you know, move it out, give it a test, and see if it can be done. I have a question, hey, Doug? Could this be implemented today if they wanted it to go a mile or you have to come back
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that modifying the ordinance would require it to come back before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Well, at least we can do something today if we have to. But let's look at the time for plant time and go from there. If we have plenty of time to come back before plant time, let's do that. I think the Ag Commissioner could probably answer that question for you guys, when they're going to plant and what needs to be done. And I'd like to thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry. It's great to see you. Robert Ripley.
I'm sorry, outside, it's a little bit delayed.
Oh, no problem. Good to see you, Robert. Go ahead.
Chairman, Board members, thank you for being here this afternoon. A couple of things about this ordinance I'm concerned about. First of all, I don't know how many of you have lived near a place where there's marijuana growing in the backyard of someone else's house. It smells like skunk. I'll take that, multiply it by about 1,000. That's how the plants are in Sutter. We walk out of our house, we're hit with a wall of the smell. It gets on our clothes. I'm a small businessman. I'm actually a pediatric dentist. I deal with kids, and I smell like marijuana. Who wants to take their kids to an office that smells like marijuana? The other thing is that the 500-foot rule would be, well, try not to call names or anything, but it's kind of ridiculous because the house closest to the grow in Sutter, they have two small children, both under five. And this is straight from Harvard. He said that the marijuana smell, smoke, can have permanent effects on executive function, memory, and even IQ. So, I didn't know what executive function meant, so I looked it up. And it means that you have difficulty organizing, difficulty in planning and initiation, inability to multitask, which as men, most of us can't multitask anyway, moral reasoning, and decision-making. And, you know, we're already struggling with kids not getting a good education because of COVID. We don't need to affect them with the smell of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate that. Next speaker is Steve Roach. Steve, if you're outside, I know it's delayed, but if you could come in, that'd be great. Could do that? Okay. And next on deck is Joan Hilbers. Hi, Steve.
Thanks, good to see you again. It's a little delayed out there, so that's why people outside are taking a moment to get up here to the rostrum. First of all, thank you to all the supervisors who gave us time this week to discuss this at good length. And I guess you all are pretty familiar with a lot of our concerns from the southern neighborhoods and the schools or whatnot. My understanding is that Superintendent Robison from Sutter High School has sent a letter to you. I don't know if that's going to be put in the record, read aloud. I'm not sure what his preferences are on that, but I do know that he expresses concerns about this. I looked at the ordinance that's from Yuba County, which prohibits all cannabis cultivation in unincorporated areas. And then there's a little sentence in there which says, "But cannabis doesn't mean hemp." And there is part of the rub. They got it half-right. But if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. And the problems that we have with it, I'm not against cannabis cultivation by any means, and I've made that clear, we've all made that clear. But the plant itself produces some pretty heavy impacts to anyone who's living around it or trying to go to school nearby or enjoying a park. One of them is the smell, which everyone's talked about. It travels far more than 1,000 feet. Equally, if not more so, is the criminality that follows this plant. Criminals are not particularly smart people, so they're out there stealing hemp plants for whatever reason. They think it's smokable marijuana, they're going to mix in with what they're selling, they're just having fun with their criminal buddies. But it ultimately ends up in things like gunfire in the middle of the night. Fortunately, we didn't have that this past fall. It has happened south of us, and we've had our deputies out there getting shot at. Pretty serious stuff. I don't think anyone wants around going through the Sutter High School campus. I certainly don't want one through my back window. So, 1,000 feet and 500 feet, last time I checked, the weapons we have today, they carry a lot farther than that. Last part, if you look at the Yuba County ordinance where they discuss findings, they talk about, and I think it's almost a quote, devastating effects on the water table in California. We haven't spent a lot of time talking about that. We do know, sort of from our own experience, that local supplies of water, both at Sutter High School and at ranches adjacent to the grow, suffered last fall. So, we have a reason to believe that there's some connectivity there. So, boil it down, same thing we've been saying all along, not against cannabis growing, but this is a significantly different crop from anything else that's grown in the county. Don't want to stop it. There may be great places where it can be grown successfully. Growers make their money, landowners make their money. Communities, schoolkids, parks, recreation are all separated due to the uniqueness of this crop. So, I would ask you to consider that and do whatever can be done to protect these constituencies. You might have to do something different than what's been done elsewhere. We support you in going forward and doing that courageously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. And next up, Joan Hilbers. And next on deck is J.R. Tiara. If you could come in from the outside for speaking after Joan, please.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Joan Hilbers, and I'm here to support the proposed Sutter County hemp ordinance that was put together by the Sutter County Ag Commission and the Yuba-Sutter Farm Bureau. We live and we work in a right-to-farm community. I, however, ask the Sutter County Board of Supervisors to consider a couple changes to the ordinance. One is a clarification of the ordinance, so it can be a little bit clearer, that the distance from the grow be measured from the property line of the grow and the subject property under review. You cannot have any meaningful measurement from the middle of one property to the middle of another property. The second item would be that we ask you to consider that 1,000 feet from sensitive receptors, that would include churches, childcare, hospitals, parks, and schools, be extended as this is not enough distance. And the reason, and my reasons are a little bit different, is that Sutter High School has a grow within 50 feet of their north property line. This is where the hay field ends and where the road to the water tower begins, and we have a drainage ditch and then the grow. This is way too close to the students who use that field, who use the...sorry. This is way too close to the students who use the field and the water tower road to exercise. This is too close for the public who is walking to the water tower to exercise. Two, the smell from the hemp field has plagued our community for months this past year. With even a gentle north breeze, Sutter High School will be swamped with hemp smell again. This will affect the students and the staff and who will spend all, the students who spend all day at school and many of the people that stay after school for sports. It would be a shame for our students to come home from school smelling like hemp. The third item is that we also have to be sensitive to the school's reputation. Yes, other schools will be coming to Sutter High for after-school and weekend sporting and school events. It would be an utter shame to have the guest of our community be subject to hemp smell. Plus, I can only imagine what will be said about our community. Oh, yeah, that's the hemp school. And the joke will be on us for not protecting what is most important to us. Gentlemen, we encourage you to vote for the proposed hemp ordinance because we need a hemp ordinance. We encourage you to consider a couple clarifications like the property line and verbiage and include and maybe extend the 1,000-foot from the Sutter High School as a sensitive area as it's not enough. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate the comments. Next up is J.R. Tiara, and then after J.R., Karen Liggett is next up on deck. Hello, J.R. Welcome.
Hello, Dan. How are you? Good afternoon, supervisors. Thank you for a moment of your time. Interesting things are happening outside between hemp growers and residents, actually having discussions about the concerns. And I'm a farmer. My family's been farming here since 1907, multiple crops. And I do remember growing up that we have to look at this picture as we have a right to farm. And I'm not, and that's one thing we have to also, at the foundation of this all, this is a United States Department of Agriculture farm product. That's the foundation of it. Now, we have concerns for residents, for aroma. I know that. And that's a concern that is, can be called a nuisance, it can be called what you like. And those things have to be mitigated in some form or fashion. Now, most of the things in this ordinance, from good farmers like myself and other farmers that are in the area, commercial, traditional farmers who are getting into the hemp industry because of the multibillion-dollar industry it has before us, we have, we want to practice these practices. It's common sense. We don't want to impose on our neighbors. We don't want our neighbors angry at us. And we usually work things, we've never had an ordinance saying you can't farm rice, you can't farm peaches here. We've just worked it out. So, for example, aroma, the aroma that you're smelling, or the molecular compounds are called terpenes. And those terpenes are just aroma. They're in every fruit, everything banana you smell. And when that evaporates, by the way, the terpenes from hemp are antimicrobial and antibacterial. So, that's just a food for thought. It's floating in your air, Corona time, it's not a bad thing. I know it has an aroma, but it is actually medically, clinically, a good thing to have it flooding our area when in terms of this serious situation. So, but the realistic thing is, this ordinance is being kind of dumped on residents in a sense, no offense to that, and on farmers. There are dozens of farmers, like myself included, who've spent thousands of dollars, and all of a sudden, in one fall tonight, I'm out of business. And so, and I already have urban encroachment problems, as it is. Now, we farm organically, most all the hemp, so we don't use the heavy pesticides. So, the aroma is an issue, but there's not a health and public, you know, public health and safety issue. You can't die from eating hemp. You can't die from touching it. It's not going to, it's green, it's not going to get you stoned, for that matter. But, but the thing is, as a peach farmer, as an almond farmer, a walnut farmer, right now, with this air blowing right now, dozens and hundreds of people are sitting in their doctor's offices or hospitals from asthma, congestive heart failure, COPD, breathing all the air in the trees that were planted by the city or the county. But we don't complain about that. We just go to the doctor and get drugs. So, it's relative to, it's a big-picture thing. We have sun suite at all the prune growers. When they're growing fruit, they're drying it. It smells. We have the city flushing its sewer system. I've lived here. It smells.
I'm asking you to wrap it up, too.
Okay, so my point is, I encourage you to allow the stakeholders to get together, just like we did outside, and figure out a better solution that makes sense and doesn't cut anybody's foot off and doesn't upset the neighbors and allow neighbor to neighbor and come up with a process that says, I want to have grow hemp here, work with your neighbors, they have a say. But let's not cut out hundreds of thousands of acres because the city limits. You know, I may have 500 acres, and the city limit sign cuts through it, that's all 500 acres of farmland, and you can't use it. So, so that, my point is, allow the stakeholders, allow us farmers who are trying to build an industry to work with the residents in a good format and build a future in this industry because it is good for our local economy.
Okay, let's wrap it up. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is Karen Liggett, and then after Karen is Justin Eve.
Karen Liggett, Yuba County. And I was before the board when they did this ordinance a long time ago. I tried to beg you guys not to do it. You guys did it anyway. I have gotten numerous, numerous, numerous stories about people getting kidnapped. One recently went over the state line because somebody owed money to somebody that grew hemp. And it's numerous. People are getting killed over this, just like pot. And I've done both issues, and I'm getting ready to go national to try to stop this. And all that, this is, the pot and hemp is a public, I mean, a private thought. They do that theirself. Once they cross that line, it goes into public. That means it's a breach of contract to what they've told the counties and the cities. They lied. And if you could talk to your council, that means breach of contract as far as the smells, the crimes, all that stuff. They lied just to get what they wanted, money. And that's what the counties are doing, the cities are doing, money. And people like me that does not want to be bothered with it, we're being forced to be bothered with it. We're being forced to the crimes. I almost got hit by somebody that was trying to run from one of these properties some time ago, and it's not right. We have a right to say no as well. That's why I'm wearing the American flag. We have a right as well. We have just as much right as they do. But you bring it into the public, that's a different story. And they have done it numerous times. If you read the papers, you'll see it. I saw a letter to the editor recently of one of the guys complaining about his neighborhood and all that, the crimes and the smells, and the smells have been talked about numerous times tonight. And especially our children. What message are we bringing to them? Going to the dope world? We're running out of real businesses because the dope people are here. Why don't you guys learn to get more regular businesses in here instead of dope businesses? Can you guys at least... Can you guys at least contemplate another kind of in source, source of income for the county instead of dope? And have drug dealers, have kids on drugs? Come on now. We need to go ahead and stop. Stop repeating bad behavior and start doing good behavior for our children. Please, think about their future because we've all done ours. I'm way older than most of you guys in here. We've done our bad behaviors. Think about the children's futures on their livestock. What you guys are bringing to them. What you guys are saying to them. Hey, instead of going to get a real job, go get into drug dealing. That's what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. And Justin Eve.
I'm going to take this off. I'm not much of, in support of tyranny. County Council Administrators, Board of Supervisors, Agriculture Department, Planning, appreciate you guys being here tonight. Obviously, it's a sensitive subject. I do believe this is the first ordinance. I'm not sure what the lady previous to me was talking about an ordinance, but I was there at the moratorium. We are here to talk about hemp, a couple of products that's coming out of your region. This is styrofoam replacement. This is hemp in the inside, mushrooms on the outside, comes out of paradise. And this is hemp grain sold at your local grocery stores, actually sold in every single grocery store in the country. This is hemp grain. I believe notoriously, we are hemp grain, or we are a grain growing county, 100 and some odd acres, 100,000 plus acres of rice, 550,000 acres in our, this county and the other four counties surrounding us. And I don't know if any of you guys been in agriculture before. I believe you all have been in agriculture, currently in agriculture. We're not making much money, you know? Rice and walnuts, cost 1,500, make 500. Doesn't make sense. I would love to leave a legacy to my children of agriculture. I moved to this county from Sacramento County because I didn't want to deal with the bureaucracy down there. And I came here because I believe in this county. I raised my kids here. My kids go to school here. Our wife works for Lennar, big home builder that's developing your South Sutter County city there. My point being is that this is an emerging industry, and this ordinance is going to prevent us from continuing to grow. I currently own a property or purchasing a property. I don't know if I could pass this map out. Could I give this map?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Go ahead.
This just shows what the current ordinance is going to do to our property. We're current taking over an old tomato factory that was dilapidated, falling apart. We put a few hundred thousand dollars into it in the last couple of years and made some great inroads with your departments here and become a good citizen of your, of your region here. I'm an organic farmer, USDA certified organic. I didn't start getting into hemp. I was actually growing other crops, moranga, which is a native crop to, you know, the East Indian, Bajabi community here. And looking to teach them about how they can bring their native species here and grow it more. In any case, that property you're looking at there is 30,000 square feet of fully automated greenhouses that we spent over $100,000 in fixing. And we also cultivated a crop, the first certified seed producer in this region. I'm also first USDA certified organic producer, and I was also the first USDA certified organic producer and hemp grower to go to a farmer's market in California state history. So, we're really pushing it forward and trying to make this happen. We've already been working with off-takers of grain. We've already secured off-take agreements for grain. We know that we can already outcompete rice, grain for grain, dollar for dollar. That's just the grain, not including all the other parts of this plant, let alone materials that we can make out of clothing, particle board, like I have a sample here of a project that we're looking at. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the NorCal hemp growers, but we've been working with them to bring decortication to this region as well, not only to make particle board, but also clothing fabrics, working with the likes of Nike and Levi's and Converse. You know, we need more than 550,000 acres of this crop.
I'm going to ask you to try to wrap it up here.
No problem.
Okay.
Big issue here, I know the smell is an issue. I don't know if anybody is familiar with pig farming or the end of the year rice farming. We have rotting crops. It's a pretty obtrusive smell. Cattle farming, we used to have dairies here. Those are obtrusive smells. I get that. There's no medical proven. The guy mentioned something at Harvard, that's smoke, smoke from cannabis, not the smell of cannabis. I believe his stated is, is a terpenes, volatile organic compounds are not harmful to you.
I'll give you like 30 more seconds, all right?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The question of the ask is, is if you could table this matter for 30 to 45 days, so the stakeholders and the constituents that have concerns, which Joan and others have already mentioned, this ordinance does not solve their problem. It is only preventing it slightly, but not a solution. So, we need to table the matter for 30 to 45 days. You could vote, inform a subcommittee, taking people like myself, stakeholders, and other constituents, that we can have 30 to 45 days to work this ordinance between ag, between planning, working with county council and county administrator, and work with you guys here, see if we can make this work. Because I don't want to have to turn around and file lawsuits because I've been put out of business. Now, my choice is we move forward, we create an ordinance, and we also put in Fire Code 38, which will actually allow us to process. You can give me a permit, doesn't mean I'll actually be able to do it. So, table the matter, 30 to 45 days, form a subcommittee if your stakeholders and your constituents have concerns, and let us work this out and work with you all. You guys have been doing a great job. Really appreciate the time. And if you guys need anything, I'm here to stay. I'm not going anywhere. Even if you outlaw hemp, I'm still going to be here working to make this place a great place. But I think that we all know, we're not making money. This is an opportunity. There's no point shutting it down now.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. And then we're going to bring this issue back to the board for discussion. Board comments? Supervisor McKelley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you that this is ordinance that all of us have been wrestling with for the last month or so, and especially in this last week. And so many of you, we've been able to meet with and appreciate your time and all of your comments. You know, it's difficult for me especially. I am a farmer. We've, my family's been farming here for 100 years, and we certainly want to be able to protect a farmer's right to farm. But there are also very valid concerns with the proximity to residences, churches, schools. And I think that, you know, the past two years, this board hasn't been able to pass anything. And here we are again, a little bit late in the year, in my opinion, because if we don't pass, well, let's say we do pass this ordinance tonight, it still won't go into effect for 30 days, which with the good weather that looks like it will be here in the near future, could give some hemp farmers the ability to plant. And if we pass this, not be able to remove those, obviously, legally. So, it puts us in a little bit of a bind as far as the timeframe moving forward. I don't think any of us, I mean, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I don't think any of us believe that the language in this ordinance is perfect by any means. I'm sure we all have issue with something in it. But my thought is to at least pass this now, tonight, and my initial thought was to revisit it sometime next year and make revisions or amendments to this document. However, after this week, I've had the thought that maybe we pass this tonight and immediately, before our next meeting, start to make revisions to it if we can. I don't want to go another two weeks without passing an ordinance that's already taken two years. And not only for the safety of children, schools, residents, and really for our ag commissioner. I mean, it's been two years. We know how much trouble it has been for her and how difficult it is. And we need to get something done for our ag commissioner so Lisa Herbert can do her job. And I would suggest also, you know, I do like some of the ideas. I've been researching the King's County ordinance, and I like some of the ideas they have as far as a half mile radius to the sensitive receptors. And maybe that's something that, that would work for us if we look into that in the future. But it would be my suggestion that we try to pass this tonight and look at it again very closely and make some changes in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Conant?
Yeah, so I ditto everything that Supervisor McKelley has said. I also would like to see us have something for indoor grows that, you know, like this gentleman's got a greenhouse he's working on. I would like to see us add a sentence that we add, 150 foot for indoor grows. Because I think the smell and the odor and the problems will be much reduced in a greenhouse versus an outdoor grow. And I'd also like to, down the road, we revisit this next year for sure and see how we've done with the regulations we're going to pass. See what's good and see what's bad. And we don't wait till the last minute either. We try to start this in maybe December or January to come up with a better plan. It's been a long time coming. We need this ordinance passed tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Baines?
To the chair, I think the last thing we could do is not do anything tonight. Going back to our ag commissioner, 2019, the ag department spent over $125,000 out of their pocket to deal with this, deal with this issue or this industry. They're spending over 1,000 hours a year, you know, monitoring, testing, and doing that. And because there's no ordinance in place, people could kind of go free for all and plant wherever they want. And it is a, you know, nuisance. We've had a number of constituents that have come out and, and, you know, voiced their concerns when it comes to the smell and that. And, you know, I mean, I was sharing with somebody yesterday that we had processing facilities like Del Monte, you know, leave this community or was forced out of this community, harder packing because of smell issues, right? I mean, it's so serious, right? I mean, that people have a valid concern that, and I think that we do need to, we need to adopt the, an ordinance. And I think I echo what the concerns are here, something that needs to happen now and can be revisited, you know, sooner than later. But again, you all do have the right to farm, but we need to set an ordinance to, to make sure that we help those folks that are, that are, you know, being slammed by the smells and that type of stuff, the nuisances that they're dealing with. So, but again, I'm not familiar with the, the ordinance that Supervisor McKelley mentioned of Kern County.
King's County.
Oh, sorry, Kern, the King's County. Would love to hear that. And I like the fact that, that we had speakers say that, that, you know, they just wanted some minor modification is what it was. But, but again, that minor modification, like was mentioned by Mr. Libby here, it's going to drag this out and will stop you folks that want to plant, it'll stop you from having that opportunity. So, I mean, I think if we can get something in place to allow you to go out and start doing what you need to do, that it's, that's the most important thing.
Thank you, Supervisor Baines. And I'll tell you my comments. I mean, I was here a couple, few years ago when we, Larry was here too, and went through this, you know, these discussions and back and forth, and there was just a lot to it. I would, I would ditto what Supervisor McKelley said. The one thing is, you know, we do need to get something done tonight because the growing season is coming. But I also agree with Supervisor McKelley, and I don't think we should wait till even several months. I think we should go back to the table and look at the revisions. You know, I think taking your suggestions and bringing farmers to the table as well and getting everybody kind of together and come out with what's best and what works for the whole community. I'm sitting here between three experts, or three experts who are all farmers, you know, and I am actually not. But, you know, listening to their opinions makes a lot of sense to me, and that's one good thing about the board. We have this diversity where we can share our expertise with each other and learn from each other on how that works. But I, I believe that Supervisor McKelley's suggestions are really good, and I think this is a time that we would pass an ordinance on that. So, I would agree with the ordinance.
I propose an amendment to add...
Well, we don't have a motion yet. So, do you want to make that informal motion, Supervisor McKelley? Yeah?
I'd like to make a motion to pass this ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, and we got a second? And do we have an amendment?
Yes. So, I'd like to amend to add a indoor grow of 140, 50 foot buffer for indoor grow.
So, the one thing on the, on the changes in amendment of language that it won't be able to come back to pass for another 30 days, so...
But just that portion, correct, counsel?
The amendment, a change to the ordinance now requires that the ordinance come back for a new first reading for its new...
The whole ordinance?
Yes.
That's why Supervisor McKelley suggested that we go right to the drawing board as soon as, even after this ordinance passes as it is. Yeah?
I thought we could pass it without that.
But if you're, if you're asking for staff to come back with an additional amendment at the next board meeting that could be incorporated into something that you pass tonight, that could be done.
But we could move forward with this part and then have them bring that back.
Oh, there you go.
Have that come back at the next board meeting. Yes.
Okay, well, that would not be in form of a motion, and that would be in form of directing staff, correct?
Directing staff, correct.
Doug?
So, you want to withdraw and then you want to direct staff? Okay.
Direct staff to do the proposal for indoor grow 150 foot.
Okay, and then a question for counsel, the, the property line issue, is that something that we could also direct staff and bring back, or is that something we could actually change? Like measuring from the property line? It was brought up by Joan and Steve.
Any of those changes today would require a new first reading.
I see. Okay. No, so we'll also direct staff to look at the, the property line issue that was brought up today and the other issues. There's a couple of other issues that Joan and Steve brought up. Okay, then I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Do we get another comment on that motion?
Sure, go ahead.
Do you get another public comment on the motion, right?
Sure. Yeah, I'll take it.
You're not creating any solutions. Joan's problem of the distance is not a solution within your ordinance. If you do not create a solution, which you're not right now...
Right.
You're not doing anything other than hurting us and opening yourself up to become personally liable for lawsuits. It's already been shown...
Yes.
That you can, you can do your public, you know, situation here. But at the end of the day, people are personally liable for their actions. It's already been approved in the United States of America. And I don't want to go down that road. But you're leaving us with no other choice. I believe if you give us two weeks to 30 days, we can work out this issue and come up with an ordinance that satisfies everyone. You are not creating solutions with this ordinance. It's clear. She said it. Everyone that came up here that was against it said this does not create a solution for us. And you're opening yourself up for a bigger issue.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Well, in the comments there, we do have a motion that was... No, actually, I'm not going to take any more comments because we're not, we don't need to take any more public hearing comments at this point. We finished the public hearing, and we appreciate all your comments. So, at this point, we have to, we have to vote, right?
Yes.
So, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, now, we do look forward to going back to the drawing board on this sooner than later, and then we'll, we'll work to these comments and address the public comments. All right. Thank you. Okay, and we're going to, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Let's try this five-minute... Okay, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Thank you for letting me address the board. My name's Lori Stone, and I have worked for Sutter County for 15 years. And I've never spoken at a board meeting. I'm terribly nervous right now. But I really want to, um, express to you, first of all, thank you for passing this for us. Um, I really believe the county employees are the lifeblood of Sutter County, and as a longtime employee, um, you know, I can tell you that the last time we had, like, a proper cost of living increase was in 2008. And every year, we're bringing home less and less money. You know, the cost of living continues to go up, and, um, and we bring home less money. And as I said, I just celebrated 15 years, and I want you to know I'm extremely grateful for my job with Sutter County. I believe in the work that we do tremendously. But, you know, for every five years, I get like 60 or 70 cents more an hour. You know, so for my experience and my loyalty to the county, I don't really feel like we're compensated the way we should be. So, I just wanted to ask you, um, if you could please just really work with the union on getting our wages comparable to other counties. We're becoming what's known as a training county. People come here, we spend considerable time and resources in training people, and then they leave. They go to different counties that pay them more. So, I, I, you know, I appreciate this, um, gesture of approving this, um, proposal. But I would ask that the board really work with our union and really keep in mind that we are the lifeblood of Sutter County, and we deserve to be, you know, compensated for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate it very much. Okay, Gina?
So, as I was saying, um, the current assistant assessor is retiring in July, and, um, this position has, serves the critical, um, task of overseeing day-to-day operations and assisting with the development of the annual rules. So, our current rules say that a position cannot be double-filled without board approval. The assessor is requesting the ability to hire, um, the retiring assistant assessor's replacement, um, and having a, the position double-filled for a period of 10 weeks so that the current incumbent can transfer that critical knowledge that she currently possesses. So, that's the first recommendation, that you authorize the, the assistant assessor position to be double-filled. The recommendation also requests that you approve a change to our personnel rules so that department heads may request a double-fill without board approval in the future. It would require that they have approval from the county administrator, and, um, it would allow the county administrative officer to allow a double-fill for a period not to exceed three months for the express purpose of succession planning where an incumbent is leaving or retiring, and his or her replacement needs the benefit of the incumbent's expertise. That would modernize our rules. And then the third recommended action is that, um, as department head, or actually, as assistant department head positions have become vacant, Human Resources has been coming to the board requesting that you convert that position to at-will, which means that that position serves at the, um, pleasure of the appointing authority. And so, the third recommendation is that you adopt an amendment to the resolution providing for at-will appointments to add the class title of assistant assessor. So, the cost to double-fill the assistant assessor position for 10 weeks is estimated to be $27,374. There would be no additional general fund impact as the department currently has, um, current-year budget savings to cover the additional cost. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll bring that back to the board. So, we have basically have three separate actions, right? Is that we're asking?
Um, yes. Approving staff's recommendations.
We can do it in one motion, but I, I don't know if there's concerns over any of the items, so, um, start with that first part and fill in for 10 weeks. Any questions? Okay, and then the second part was, um, oh, yeah.
Through, through the chair. No, I just want to comment, I think it's very important, you know, I'm doing the same thing in my own company. You know, I got a guy leaving in two months.
Right.
It's very critical that you train them the right way, and they come in, and, and absolutely, it's, it's...
Yeah.
Get the ground running, but, um, let's watch it. I mean, I don't want this to be a, a normalcy. 10 weeks is, is a long time.
Okay.
I believe you can take one motion approving all of staff's recommended actions.
Right, I understand that, but I think there's some thoughts on the, like, a second part, allowing the CAO to do it without the supervisors, you know, just kind of hearing here, so, but is, any discussion?
Well, that was just going to be, um, my only question, I guess. So, then we're putting this in the hands of the CAO for every department head. I mean, I like the idea of, of having someone come in, you know, for succession and, um, you know, mirroring them for a while. It's a great benefit, but, um, did you say that was up to three months, Gina, or what?
Yes. So, the additional language would be, well, the, the rule currently reads that department heads shall not appoint more persons to a class at any given time than the salary code provides, and then this is the new language that we're recommending. Except, a position may be double-filled for the express purpose of succession planning where an incumbent is leaving or retiring, and his or her replacement needs the benefit of the incumbent's expertise. The double-filling of a position must be approved by the county administrative officer and shall be for a period not to exceed three months. So, it does give the CAO's office the discretion to allow for a, a limited double-fill of a position.
Sorry, one more quick question. And then are all of these positions hired going to be at-will?
Um, well, so we would come to the board to recommend a position be converted to at-will every time, and so whenever we change a position to at-will, we codify its status as at-will in a resolution.
Okay. Any other questions, Supervisors? No questions? Okay, then, um, do we want to move forward with this as a one motion? Or do, yeah, okay. Then entertain a motion. So, I'd entertain a motion, then.
To the Chair.
Yes.
I could just comment briefly that, um, we take these very seriously. I haven't, um, ever in our time experienced having, uh, three months of overlap. I'm not saying it, it's appropriate in, in cases like this, but it's typically much less, like, usually a few weeks at a time. And obviously, we would look at the budget and make sure that there's room to do that, that it's appropriate, that we've, I would consult with HR and, of course, get a recommendation from them before that. And if there was anything budget-wise, then we would have to bring it back to the board anyways.
Okay. Right, so I'd entertain a motion?
Move to approve, Count.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
No.
Then, okay, we have one, one opposed. Supervisor Baines, uh, note that for the record, please, and then, uh, motion carries. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to item number 17. Neil?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. The item before you is the adoption of plans and specifications and authorization to solicit bids for a project to improve the safety of the jail cells at the main jail and the medium jail. This is a little bit of a hybrid approach that essentially the sheriff's office, of which undersheriff is on the phone and available, or I should say, on the line and available to comment. But between the sheriff's office, general services, and development services, we've come up with a project approach because the sheriff's office has identified a need to improve the safety of the cell with existing bunks, existing beds, and the furniture that's in various cells that create ligature points where inmates essentially could harm themselves. So utilizing money that the sheriff's office is receiving as a result of housing state inmates due to the COVID pandemic, they want to take advantage of the funds and put them towards at least one of this project, which, like I say, would essentially require structural welding of various shapes onto the, like I say, the cells and the furniture that's in the jail. And the way that we've tried to accelerate this project is normally my department would develop a set of plans and specifications, and then those would essentially be put out to bid following approval by your board. What we've tried to do is we're utilizing more of a job walk where we developed a bid list of all the items and the areas that need to have the corrective work done. And then the sheriff's office is going to act as somewhat of the onsite construction manager because, obviously, the security nature of having people in their jail. So we would put out a bid package to where interested contractors would come, walk through the jail at all the various areas that are going to require work. They would submit then their prices on a standardized bid form that we've prepared, and then we would bring that bid results back before your board and to award a contract. So, like I say, it involves some coordination between general services, the sheriff's office, and development service. And like I said, undersheriff Smallwood is available if you have any questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Back to the board. Question, Supervisor Digemeyer?
Through the chair. It would behoove me that the person who manufactured these beds, that we bought them for jail, would have to repair them or take care of them to make them safe. Or whoever purchased the beds. I mean, I'm kind of wondering here, we bought these beds for a jail. It sounds like we got dipped on the beds. Now we're having to pay to redo the beds.
Neil, you have comments on that?
So...
Sure. So the main part of the jail was constructed in 1975. And at the time, the bunks, the beds, and the furniture that was submitted and provided was per the specs and met the state standards. Since then, in the evolution, unfortunately, of inmate care, like I say, undersheriff Smallwood may have something to add, but it's just a matter of the progression of improving inmate safety.
Okay, through, so Neil, I'm so sorry. I thought you were talking about the new wing. So it sounds like this is...
No, I was talking about the old one.
Okay, I thought because, fine, you know, and I take that back. Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
First, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Supervisor Conan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? There being none, the motion carries. Thank you, Neil, and then you're off for item number 18 as well.
So the next item is essentially to modify a master purchase order that we have with buttesand and gravel. So the county's purchasing ordinance requires that the county's purchasing agent is only authorized to sign purchase orders up to $50,000. Above that, it has to come to your board. Previously, we bought an increase on the purchase order to $100,000 for buttesand and gravel. And because of a variety of additional roadwork that we've been doing, for example, we have been doing a significant shouldering work, for example, on, like, Reclamation Road. So we're utilizing a lot of material. So we're looking to improve or increase the limit of the purchase order with buttesand and gravel to not to exceed $200,000. But we're making a corresponding reduction that what happens is that our department each year puts out a request for materials from a number of vendors. And so we have purchase orders with two other companies, Knife River and Nordic Industries. And we have essentially forecast what we would spend on those, with those companies this year. And we're not going to reach essentially their budgeted purchase order limits. So that is essentially would be the offset for the potential increase that we're wanting to budget in for this purchase order with buttesand and gravel. And I'm happy to answer any questions. It doesn't affect our budgeted amount. It doesn't affect the adopted budget for what we put into road materials. It only is adjusting where we spend it.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? First and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? There being none, that motion carries. Thank you, guys. Okay, next item, Neil.
And my final action here is to seek your authorization to solicit a request for proposals from qualified consultants that would be, perform the plan checking for the utility infrastructure plans for the Sutter Point Lakeside Development. So the, as we're aware, the board approved the Tier One, Tier Two Development Agreement in November. And so since then, the consultants for the builders have been essentially designing all of the underground improvements, sewer lines, storm drain line, water lines, in addition to all the mass grading for the site. And so currently, what they're working on is the sewer line extension, about 7.6 miles. That's going to go from the project site down to the SAC's regional sewer trunk line. So as a part of that, our department will have to check those plans in conjunction with SAC County. And then the other phases of the plans will also need to be checked. And so with the existing staff that we have, we would be overwhelmed and inundated very, very quickly, especially with the timelines that are required in order to help this project continue forward. So we're seeking to put out an RFP to select a consultant. There are a number of qualified firms out that do this for most and many jurisdictions throughout California. And we would receive those proposals, rate them, score them, and bring them back before your board with a request to award a contract. The cost of the contract essentially will be borne by the fees that are charged to the builders for their development. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? Entertain a motion?
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, there being none, the motion carries. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Next on deck, Mr. Steve Smith, the CAO.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. At the February 9th meeting, I gave quite extensive, I'd say, presentation on 850 Gray, the history, the number of times that the item or items related to that property were brought to the public. And we discussed some of the finance options, the real estate market. We had our financial consultants speak, and also our real estate consultant. Since then, and the board gave the, kind of the blessing to continue moving forward with the property acquisition. Since that time, there's been a few things that have come up, not bad things, just additional information. We've received information on the appraisal and other things which I'll let... So Assistant CAO Leanne Link has a presentation, so I'm not going to speak over her. I'd like her to take over at this time, and thank you very much.
Good afternoon, good evening. Leanne Link, Assistant County Administrator. Just as a quick refresher on the property, this is 13.37 acres. That it's actually six different physical addresses and three different assessors' parcel numbers on Gray Avenue, so we now refer that to as the Gray Avenue Project, as opposed to 850 Gray. And the negotiated purchase price is $8.24 million. It provides us with 125,000-plus gross square feet of space. There are currently three tenants in the property who have differing lease terms, but that provides initially about $224,000 per year in lease revenue. And that is a triple-net lease so that they participate in the cost of the upkeep of the property. There are also two commercial rental spaces. Before I really get into this, I also wanted to point out that each of you has an updated budget transfer voucher that shows an area highlighted in yellow. And I'll let K&amp;M Public Finance talk about the competitiveness of the offers that we got. But we did have to make a change after the budget packet was submitted, so it changed it by about $25,000. But it really benefits us in the long run, so we're able to do that. So there are four recommended actions today. This is really what I kind of call the mechanics of finance and completing this, getting us toward completion of this purchase. Removal of the contingencies. Approval of the financing plan as recommended by the debt advisory committee. Establishing the public, thank you. Establishing the Sutter County Public Facilities Corporation to facilitate the lease revenue financing. And adopting a budget amendment for the purchase, the debt proceeds, the county's contribution, and the good faith deposits. It's very important that you understand that when we release the contingencies, our $200,000 deposit that's required upon the release becomes non-refundable. So it is an important action for you to take today. And I'll go through each of those contingencies so that you understand precisely what you're releasing. Thank you. So the first one is the financing contingency. So this is an assurance that we are able to get financing for this project. We released, through a company called Oppenheimer that was acting upon our behalf, we released a proposal for financing for a direct placement, which is a kind of financing that's available to the county. It requires far less time and cost for such a small borrowing than if we went out with a full municipal bond. So it really benefits us to do the private placement. We received nine good proposals from qualified banks who are available to work in California. So that was very important to us. And with that, the debt advisory reviewed those proposals. We had two separate proposals that were considered, two types of proposals. One was an interim financing, one was a longer-term financing. The proposals were very competitive. We had, as I said, nine good proposals. And so at this point, we know that we will get financing with sufficient confidence to release the contingency. Okay, the second one, I'm sorry, is the appraisal. We both pushed the button. The appraisal contingency, we hired a firm called BBG Incorporated out of Sacramento to appraise the property. And I think that there was some confusion over a previous appraisal that was given to us a couple of years ago. But BBK, or BBG's appraisal is up to date for this property. And the property appraised at market value, as is with the county's existing lease in place, at the purchase price of $8.24 million. If there were, the lease that the county has, which is very long-term, as you know, almost 30 years, if that were removed, then a market-stabilized appraisal of the property would be $12,800,000. So this meets the requirement for the appraisal contingency. So staff believes that there's sufficient confidence to release that contingency. The intended use of property is a pretty easy one. We intend to use this for a future home of Health and Human Services. It's consistent with that. And so there's sufficient confidence there. And then the next one is a little bit more complicated. There are a lot of California government code sections that we have to comply with in the purchase of real property. So we have met those. The first was that it had to be advertised, and it was advertised three consecutive weeks as accordance with the law, on March 2nd, 9th, and 16th. The Planning Commission on March 10th determined that our project is consistent with the city's general plan. While the city doesn't have, they don't get to say yes or no to our project, it is important for them to say, yes, this is consistent with our general plan. They don't have the ability to approve or deny it. But they certainly did weigh in on that, as is required by the law. We have a sequent determination from the county's environmental officer, and that has been completed. The purchase, of course, as Steve said earlier, was approved by this board on February 9th. And then the final requirement there is a resolution of acceptance, and that will come back to the board on April 26th. So once again, there's sufficient confidence to release that contingency. And then finally, there is an environmental survey contingency. So we hired Partner Engineering Science Incorporated to review the property, and they reported back on these four conditions, which is the requirement. The recognized environmental conditions, none were identified. Controlled recognized environmental conditions, none were identified. Historical recognized environmental conditions, none were identified. And environmental issues, none were identified. So there is sufficient confidence to release that contingency. So the next few slides, we'll ask K&amp;M Public Finance, our municipal finance advisors, to go through for us. But I did want to mention, before I kick this over to them, that we had a very successful debt committee that is authorized by the board through policy. And so I wanted to point out that the debt committee was able to talk about all of the proposals for financing and come to a unanimous decision. So I did want to thank the members of the debt committee before we get started with the financing. So those are Supervisor McKelley, our CAO Steve Smith, County Council Robin Dravon, our auditor controller Nate Black, our treasurer tax collector Steve Hera, and for the vote, it was actually Christina Hernandez, his assistant, who is now acting as treasurer for that vote. And then the development services director Neil Hay, the Health and Human Services Director Nancy O'Hara, and the General Services Director Ken Sarra. And with that, I'll ask David Lyfer from K&amp;M Public Finance to present the next few slides.
Great, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, very good. Getting a little echo, but that's okay. As Leanne mentioned, we had a very successful solicitation of bids from a number of different commercial banks to purchase the loan that will be used to purchase the property. As you may recall, at the last meeting, we talked about two sort of general strategies. One was to solicit bids for an interim financing approach, you know, anywhere from one to three years, at which point the county would then need to refinance that with longer-term debt, perhaps at the time that the construction cost is known for the project. So that was one approach. The other approach was to solicit bids for a longer-term financing where we could really lock in the rate today because rates are relatively low, but seem to be on their way up. And at the same time, provide ourselves with the flexibility to pay off that debt early without a penalty if the need arose. And so we solicited bids for both. And we, as Leanne mentioned, we got nine responses, which is really among the most I've been involved in for a direct purchase solicitation like this. So that's great news. And we got great rates on both approaches, and we had a very robust discussion with the debt committee. And as Leanne mentioned, there was unanimous support for locking in the rate for 15 years, again, because rates are relatively low right now and are on the move upwards. And at the same time, having this ability to call the bonds or prepay them at any time with no premium or penalty. So that's the recommendation. The lowest overall cost is at an interest rate of 2.28%. And that's a rate that we actually can lock in today. So even if interest rates go up between now and the time that we're able to close the loan and close the escrow, this rate would be locked at this rate. So we think that's very favorable. And it will be with, most likely, with Bank of the West, which is a player in the California lease financing market. And they've done deals with many of your neighboring counties. We worked on one with Stanislaus County with them that went quite well. As I mentioned, there is no prepayment penalty. There'd be no requirement to go and pay for a rating from Standard and Poor's. You would be, in this case, there would be an equity contribution by the county, meaning a cash contribution of about $1.6 to $1.7 million, which is, we say, buying down the commercial portion of the building purchase to maintain the tax-exempt status of the borrowing. So the commercial part has some, what we call, private use. So the commercial part has some, what we call, private use, and in order to be able to borrow this at the lowest interest rate, which would be a tax-exempt rate, the county needs to put up some amount of cash, and that's the amount that our tax lawyers have calculated. We talked about this asset transfer structure. What that really means is a piece of real property will be pledged as the collateral or as the leased asset, and we're going to use some existing county assets, which will help keep the overall cost of the financing down. And then later, if the county proceeds with the project, or when the county proceeds with the project and needs to finance the construction portion of the project, then it will have that actual, the land that we're buying and the improvements that will be built on the land could serve as the asset for that financing. So with this overall plan of finance, we can have two financings outstanding, one for the land, and then later, one for the improvements, or in two or three years, when we do the financing for the improvements, if we think it's advantageous, we can roll it all into a single financing. So we have maximum flexibility at that point. And all of the costs associated with doing this financing, including the cost of your bond attorneys and your financial advisor, et cetera, will be wrapped into the financing itself. So if we can go to the next slide, and this is close to the end, this just gives you a summary of what we think the estimated debt service will be each year. So we're borrowing about $6.75 million. You see on the left with the sources and uses, and then we have the county contribution, and then we're going to put about $8.2 million into this fund to purchase the land, and you see the interest rate of 2.28%. On the right, we have the amortization of that loan. At least this is an estimate for now. We need to work with the bank on the refinement, but you can see principal, interest, total annual debt service, anywhere between $533,000 to $537,000. We try and level it out as best we can. And then we have layered in here, the second to the last column, the revenue that the county expects to receive or will receive under its current commercial leases. And so then we have the debt service that is resulting after we net out that commercial lease revenue. And so the net debt service, if we want to call it that, ranges from $312,000 up to about $536,000 in that last year because we assume there's no commercial lease revenue then, and Leanne can speak more to whether there's the possibility that you might have commercial lease revenue in the future, but we wanted to be as conservative as possible and assume only the existing leases are in place at the time. I don't know, Leanne, did you want to speak further to lease revenue, or is that enough said on that?
No, I think that's enough said for now. There is the option, of course, to renew the leases, and we've only used the numbers that are in the leases as they are currently written.
So this really, I think, illustrates the estimated cost and includes the cost of the issuance itself all wrapped into here. And then, as I said, when you're ready to do the construction piece after the value engineering process has been completed, you'll have that flexibility to do a separate financing for that, probably spread out over 30 years, I'm guessing, probably more of a public bond sale because it'll be bigger and longer. And at that point, you can roll this financing into it, or if we think this interest rate is more desirable than the rates that we find in the market in two years, then we'll just leave this one outstanding. And I guess there's always the possibility that the projects, if it weren't to move ahead and you had to sell the entire property, you could, of course, pay off this borrowing in its entirety at any time. So you have that flexibility, and that was super important to the debt committee. The last slide, if we could just go to the next slide at least, is, one of the actions that's necessary is establishing the Sutter County Public Facilities Corporation, which is a separate legal entity required under a lease revenue financing. Basically, you are going to lease a piece of real property to this nonprofit, which is controlled by the county, and the county board will serve as its board, and then you're going to lease it back, and you're going to, those lease payments to the nonprofit are then assigned over to the lender. And that's just the way that a lease financing, a lease revenue financing works. And there's really two approaches to doing lease revenue financings. One could use a separate legal entity that currently exists, and you would pay a fee for the right to use that entity, or you can create your own. And because we think that you're big enough and likely to issue additional debt in the future, we think it makes sense to save the fees and create your own entity, and then it'll be in place for any future borrowings that the county needs, whether for this project or really any project. Again, the Board of Supervisors will sit as the Board of Directors for the corporation. The officers will be the department heads listed here, Attorney Controller, Clerk of the Board, CAO, and then this entity will exist for future use. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Leanne to finish the presentation.
Okay, I'll go quickly through these last slides. On the budget amendment, I think the most important thing is to know where the funding is coming from. So we have $6,750,000 estimated in bond, or in debt proceeds, and then cancellation of obligated fund balance. The board previously committed $1.25 million specifically for this project. It'll take about $955,000 of that, which leaves almost $300,000 left in that commitment. And then finally, we have available developer impact fees of $720,000. We have an opinion that this is an appropriate use of the developer impact fees, and so feel confident with those numbers. So finally, what we'll do after the meeting, of course, is provide the seller with the notice of the release of contingencies and make the $200,000 good faith deposit. I also need to mention that in order to extend the escrow, which we have always anticipated, we'll need to make another $25,000 deposit along with that $225,000, I mean, sorry, $200,000. And then, we'll, staff will return to the Board of Supervisors on April 26th with two actions, the resolution of acceptance and the financing documents for the loan. And then finally, financing will be issued approximately May 5th, ahead of our anticipated close of escrow, and which should follow on May 12th. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, bring that back to the board for questions. Appreciate that presentation. It was very thorough, and the information that we need is right there in front of us. Let's see, any questions by any supervisors? I'm trying to think. I covered all the, all the detail.
Could I, could I, through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we spent a lot of hours just in our Zoom meetings going over it, and I want to thank everybody for their participation, especially Leanne. She worked very hard on this, and, you know, we want to make sure we're doing this the right way, and I think, as I've said earlier, this gives us the most amount of flexibility moving forward. Because we are using other assets as collateral, we will be able to run these two ways of financing alongside each other if that's what we want to do. However, if we do whatever we decide to do as far as the improvements, doing the bond sale, we still can take out that existing loan without any prepayment penalty if, at that particular time, you know, the bond rate is less than what we're currently paying at that, just over 2%. So anyways, was really happy with the way the debt committee worked, and anyways, I'm thankful, and we'll move on, I think.
Thank you, Supervisor McKelley. I also want to thank you for the work you put in the debt committee as well. I know it took a lot of time and effort. I will say, too, that this project's been going on for a few years, and, you know, so I appreciate the staff effort overall. It's been grueling at times, to say the least, but to look at the outcomes that we have here, and I can see the recommended actions, you can see the fruit of the labor, you know, coming, it's nice to see it come into fruition, especially since if you look at, you know, the appraised value of $12.8 million versus the cost, it's nice to see that. It's also great to know that we're going to be working towards one of the board goals that's been here for many years, and that's the consolidation of so many employees, and I really look forward to moving forward on the project and making that happen, so. Great, okay. Any other comments by board members?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Are we going to approve all at once? Is that okay, legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna, we have a first and a second for approval of the recommended actions tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? There being none, the motion carries. Congratulations, guys, and great job. Appreciate that.
Yep. Good job, Leanne.
Yes. Okay, we're moving on now to, any follow-up report, oh, sorry, Steve Smith is next. Oh, no, that's done, okay. Where are we at? Okay. District reports, Board of Supervisors. Let's make them brief.
Sorry, Kentucky Fried Chicken's coming. I didn't do my homework tonight, I guess. We had so much other to get, to get to today, so.
If you don't have district.
Apologize.
Let's combine district reports with any other, any condolences, too, if you want to go ahead. Any condolences, supervisor? No, okay, Supervisor Conant?
Yes, I'd just like to close in memory of Holand Schiber, passed away. Gosh, I didn't even know he had passed away originally, but his celebration of life was last Saturday at Riosel Hall, attended by many. Great guy, local farmer. His family's farmed in the Nicholas area for generations, and he'll be dearly missed.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Conant. Any district report, information? Okay, no information. Supervisor Baines?
Condolences, with the hopes of getting letters out to these families. First, we had on, on March 20th, there was a funeral service for Cornell Singh. If we could please get a letter out to, to his family on the, hold on, that was, sorry, March 10th was the funeral service, then on March 20th, there was Balbir Sangha. If we could please get a letter out to his son, Bali Sangha, and the families left behind. And a funeral service today for Gurnam Singh. If we could get a letter to his wife and daughter as well. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Baines. Anything to report on district?
Not at this time.
Okay. Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
All right, I'd like to, on a good note, I'd like to do something from all the board, congratulatory, something certificate or something for Hannah Taylor for making it to the state with her ag sales placement proficiency for, she's out of Sutter High School, congratulations, and to Jack Munger for making it to state with his wild management proficiency award. Congratulations to those two, hard work pays off. And to Emma Cucci, the daughter of Aaron and Dan, 4.72 GPA at Sutter High School, and she graduated this past December with a 4.0, with a degree in arts and humanities from Uba College. It's pretty impressive, and she still has yet to graduate from Sutter High School, so.
That's fine.
Very neat.
That's awesome.
So with that being said, like I said, I'd like to give something for them, and I'd like to close in memory of Jerry Marlon Dever. Jerry passed away in March 11th from a long battle from Alzheimer's. Jerry's son sits on many boards at Sutter County, Mike Morse, I was very sad for his passing. Jerry's a great man, and we truly missed, and Jim Robey, who passed away February 20th, once again, great man here in the area, and another gentleman, Carl Kristofferson. I just found out Carl Kristofferson had passed away December 15th with COVID and everything, you know, no funeral and so forth. Carl was a great man, was my first football coach at Sutter High School, donated a lot of time, coached in little leagues, football, and doing all kinds of great stuff in the area, retired from Pac Bell, worked for Escalera here in Uba City for 20 years. Carl, you're going to be greatly missed, very sad to hear about your passing. For community notes, Sutter Cleanup Day is April 10th. Make sure to sign that, fill out that date, make sure, April 10th, Sutter High School. Thank you very much, and in Meridian as well.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate your comments, and we will close, or we'll have the condolences letter sent once we vote on it. I have two that I'd like to close in memory of. The first request was made by Health and Human Services, is a Health and Human Services employee of Sutter County. On Friday, February 12th, 2021, we suddenly lost one of our beloved colleagues, Adria Bedile. Adria joined Homeless Services Unit in the Public Health Branch on November 9th, 2020. She was respected and admired for her compassion while working with our most vulnerable residents, which is evident from day one. Adria worked as a health program specialist and case manager for the project Room Key and Harmony Village Projects. Along with providing case management, Adria became the SOAR certified to work in Sutter County's homeless residents applying for disability through our Housing and Disability Advocacy Program. Coming from a military family, Adria's passion was working with veterans, specifically Vietnam veterans. Adria came to Sutter County with a wealth of knowledge and over 10 years of experience in case management. Adria was very excited as she was taking her last class towards completing her bachelor's degree in psychology through William Jessup University, as well as recently completing a certification in domestic violence and trauma. Adria was simple, simply passionate about helping people. Our hearts go out to Adria's family, including her 14-year-old daughter, Elena, and her 16-year-old son, Andrew. Adria was an integral part of the Public Health Homeless Service Team, and she will be missed. So I'd like to make sure we send a letter of condolence to Adria's family. I have another, is Joseph Fisher. He was, this was requested by Donna Johnson. He's a poll worker for many years here in Sutter County, a volunteer poll worker. Joseph Fisher passed away peacefully, surrounded by his loving family at home on March 17th, 2021. He is a retired Department of Veterans Affairs Chief and Police, Chief of Police and longtime resident of Uba City. Joe was also devout parishioner of Saint Isidore's Catholic Church. He was born in Youngstown, Ohio in 1940, and he was the proud and modest, of his modest, whoops, sorry, Joe was proud of his modest upbringing, being raised in Youngstown, Ohio, where he attended Sacred Heart Catholic School and was a graduate of Ursuline Catholic High School. Joe started his law enforcement career in 1960, where he joined the Mahoney County Sheriff's Department. He went on to serve in the United States Air Force, and he was then hired as a police officer with Ohio Kent State's University Police Department. After 17 years as a bomb technician, he entered the Air Force again and was sent to Vacaville, California Travis Air Force Base, where he was issued top-secret clearance and continued what would be a successful military career. Promotions to Security Superintendent then transferred Joe to McClellan Air Force Base in Sacramento. It was during that time that he married a Uba City native, Lucy Vega, and Joe's career grew and took him and his family to Illinois and then back to California again. Joe was his family's hero and often reflected on the influence of a strict Italian Catholic upbringing had on his life. His family holds close to their hearts the integrity, unwavering faith and values he lived by and brought to his military service, law enforcement career, and faith-based organizations he generously dedicated his time to, including the Knights of Columbus and the Italian Catholic Federation. Joe was passionate about his love for family. At the end of the day, through life's ups and downs, Joe always felt he had luck of the Irish, and yes, he was a devoted Notre Dame fan. So I'd like to make sure we send a letter of condolences out to Joe. Okay, and with that, I will entertain a motion for.
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll make sure to get those letters out. Any further comments by the board, by board members? Okay, at this point, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.